Welcome to the March 13th regular meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission. Our first order of business is the selection of the 2025 Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair.
I would like to nominate that we continue with the fine leadership we've had, and I nominate Michelle Plachneck for Chair and Hector Lozano for Vice Chair.
I second that.
Is there any other discussion or anyone who wants to volunteer? No. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. With a full Planning Commission in attendance, the motion passes. So, we will move on to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any staff announcements or agenda changes this morning?
Good morning, Commissioners. No staff announcements for today and no changes to the agenda.
Great. Then, this is our opportunity for the public to comment on any land use item of interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission and not on the agenda today. You have five minutes to speak, and no action can be taken on what is discussed here unless it is deemed to be an emergency. So, is there anybody who would like to come up and speak on an item not on the agenda today? Is there anybody online in it? No? Okay. So, we will open and close that piece of the agenda and move on to our regular agenda. Item A1 2024-013, conditional use permit for Jeremy and Lynette Covey-Smith, DBA... Oh, I missed the consent agenda, sorry. We have our minutes of January 23rd, 2025. Has everybody had a chance to look at them? Is there a motion?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
Thank you. So, motion passes 4-0 with 1 abstention. And now, I'm going to say this again. Regular agenda, 2024-013, conditional use permit for Jeremy and Lynette Covey-Smith, DBA Four Horse Ranch. And Madeline, I believe you are going to provide an introduction?
Good morning. Nice to see you all again. It feels like it's been a while. Let me just get this going here. Thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you. Let's try that again. There we go. Madeline Flandreau, Senior Planner, I am presenting conditional use permit 2024-013, which is for Jeremy and Lynette Covey-Smith for Four Horse Ranch. Before I start, I just want to reiterate that this application was deemed complete under the old zoning code and is therefore subject to it and not the current code. So, the applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to permit a previously existing unpermitted private equestrian facility for up to 40 horses on a parcel that is zoned rural residential. The facility proposes up to four lessons per day in equine education and therapy sessions for at-risk youth, and will only be available to their privately invited guests and clients and not open to the general public for a drop-in basis. Approximately two to five clients will be onsite daily with one to six adults acting as chaperones. There will be volunteers and employees. And they are also proposing to have up to three birthday parties per year with a maximum of 25 invited guests. So, the subject parcel is here, APN 048-009-052, which is located at 2911 Patriot Way in Burson. It's approximately 20 acres in size and has access from Patriot Way, which is a 20-foot-wide private road and public utility easement off of Highway 12. And as you can see here, it runs through the subject parcel and accesses the adjacent lots to the north and to the east. The parcel contains a single-family residence, several fenced horse pastures, one arena, and some storage sheds which are just to the south of the arena. And I'll come back to this again later, but I just wanted to highlight the fenced horse pastures so you can kind of get an idea of... The one that's in the middle is the arena, and the other ones are for the horses. So, all of you remember the appeal of the code compliance case that came before you as the Administrative Hearing Board last year. Following that hearing, the board made formal findings that the applicant's uses had indeed exceeded the zoning code's definition of a personal equestrian facility, which is permitted by right in the RR zone. A personal equestrian facility is defined in Section 17060785, again in the previous code, as a facility that is used by the residents of the property for the raising, quartering, pasturing, training, and riding of personal equines, and are intended for the personal enjoyment of the owner and occupant of the property and guests, and not as a business or a source of income. The board found that the applicant's business use is required a CUP because they constituted either a private or a public equestrian facility, both of which are conditional uses in the RR zone. So, Section 17060787 defines a private equestrian facility as "an equine facility, barn, or stable that is used in part for and by the residents of the property and their private invited clients or guests for the purpose of raising, boarding, breeding, training, and riding, including lessons and education in clinics. These activities may be undertaken for equines not owned by the resident of the property, and such services are limited to invited, such as with reservations, guests, or clients as a business or income source." So, the applicants are now seeking their conditional use permit to operate a private equestrian facility. So, there were comments that were received during the application routing from Calvers Consolidated Fire Protection District, Environmental Management, Caltrans, as well as from the public. Fire Protection District recommended conditions for the private road regarding the maintenance of the width, gravel, constructing a turnaround, and requiring that the road remain unobstructed. Environmental Management recommended requirements for compliance with regulations for camp, if you remember, that was previously part of the project description, but is no longer. And after discussions with the applicant regarding the current project description, which will not include a camp, EMA followed up stating that they had no further conditions at this time. And Caltrans recommended that the applicant install a stop sign at the existing encroachment of Patriot Way with Highway 12. There were multiple comment letters that were received from the surrounding landowners. Five were received in opposition and five in support. Comments received in support included statements regarding the positive presence of Four Horse Ranch in the community as well as impacts on students' well-being. Comments in opposition included concerns about flies, manure management, lack of appropriate care for horses, dust, vehicles frequently blocking the access easement due to lessons and events, and an inappropriate number of horses on site. In addition, there were six letters of support that were separately submitted by the applicant, many of which came from parents from kids who have taken lessons, as well as a petition of support with 37 signatures from people within the community. So, this project is consistent with general plan land use goals LU 5.4, 5.5, and 5.6, all of which are really about encouraging the attraction of new compatible businesses within community centers. The property is also located within the Burson Community Plan area, but there are no adopted goals or policies for this area. So, pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, staff prepared an initial study and negative declaration, which was distributed for a 30-day comment period from September 11th to October 11th, 2024. This document was subsequently revised to a mitigated negative declaration to include implementation of the manure management plan as a mitigation measure. This makes it a legal requirement and not just a condition of approval. This document was circulated for 30 days from January 3rd to February 3rd, 2025, during which four comment letters were received. Three were from adjacent neighbors. However, none of these comment letters addressed the adequacy of the initial study. They were reiterating their concerns about the project. The fourth comment letter was from myvalleysprings.com and included concerns regarding the number of horses and obstruction of the access road, which are issues that we are tackling today. With regards to flies and manure management, you know, the majority of the parcels in the vicinity, you can see here, to the north, south, and east are fairly large, which allow for space between the residential structures and the proposed use, which reduces the effects of odor emissions, right? However, there are four residential parcels in the subdivision directly to the west, the nearest residence being approximately 100 feet from one of the horse pastures on the west side. So, the applicant, you know, in general, odor control is accomplished through good housekeeping. The Animal Waste Management Plan that identifies best management practices addresses potential odor impacts and specifies waste collection techniques, storage and pickup procedures, as well as pest control measures and equipment maintenance procedures to be followed as part of regular operations. Compliance with this plan will result in pastures being scraped regularly to pull manure for distribution into manure piles, which are managed to create fertilized soils to use around the ranch. In addition, the applicants use a combination of fly spray, diatomaceous earth, lime, and chickens to help keep the fly numbers down. So, while odors that some might find objectionable might not disappear entirely, given that this is a livestock-related use, implementation of the waste management plan is designed to result in odors from the proposed use being less than significant from both a SEQA and a nuisance standpoint. So, to conclude, staff finds the proposed private equestrian facility consistent with Title 17 of the county code, previous county code, and the general plan. The project as proposed will not have a significant effect on the environment with implementation of mitigation. The Planning Department has received multiple complaints regarding the proposed use. With the approval of the CUP, the project will be conditioned to restrict things such as vehicle trips and the number of people on site, ensure that the easement remains unimpeded, as well as requiring the manure management plan. Although the applicant is requesting to board up to 40 horses, mitigation, the mitigation measure in the secret document includes a statement that says odor complaints received by the county will result in an inspection of the site to ensure compliance with the Animal Waste Management Plan. If the county determines that the site is in noncompliance with the final waste management plan, the county can revoke CUP 2024-013. And, you know, the commission, obviously, this is for your review. You can amend any conditions and add things as needed to address these concerns. So, I'll pass this over to you. I just wanted to also state the applicant is here. If you have questions for her. Also, Doug Oliver is here if you have code compliance questions. And Michael Vasquez with Animal Services is here as well.
Thank you. Any questions for Madeline at this point, or do we want to hear from the applicant first?
I think I do have some questions.
Okay.
From Madeline. First, I want to say I was reading through the staff report without paying attention to the first page. Whoops.
That's what it is. Deal with that later.
Good job.
And I was getting through it, and I noticed that you had the prior zone provisions attached as an exhibit, and I was thinking, this is really very clearly and logically presented. Who did it? And I went back to the first page and was not surprised to see it was you.
Well, thank you.
So, that was very... It made my job a lot easier. Now, one question I have is that on page three of the staff report, you mentioned how under a private equestrian facility, it could include using the subject parcel for guests to interact with horses before off-site trail rides. But my understanding is that is not part of the request that's before us today. That we're not going to have 25 cars before an off-site trail ride?
Okay, good question for the applicant.
Yeah.
But my understanding was that they would have people on the site, not 25 people at a time, except three times a year, who would be able to interact and be...
Yeah.
Get some education.
The described, the described activities for this permit does not include that a pre-off-site ride, get acquainted with the horses.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
The...
I want to just clarify that what you're asking, what Madeline's answering, is that they would not gather at this site before they went on a trail ride. The trail ride could have as many people as appropriate for their destination for the trail ride. Is that what's your question?
The pre-trail ride would be, you know, getting the horses ready, getting the tackle on the horses, and then getting them in the trailers and leaving. There would be no event.
The clients wouldn't be involved.
Right. But there would be some, you know, free, pre-trail ride activities to get the horses under the trailer, to under the trailers.
Then... What is the current status of the waste management plan? I mean, we talked, there's talk about a preliminary version, and then that the final version will be approved by the, by the environmental services, by the environmental department. But where are we now on that? The condition in the, with the negative declaration was that it shall be presented and approved by the environmental department. Where are we and do we have that plan before us?
Is it not attached in here?
I don't believe it.
I think it's a condition, so before they, their permit was active, they would have to have had that approved. Is that correct?
Yes.
I just, I'm just wondering where we are on it. At some points in the discussion, it sounds as if there is a preliminary plan and it has certain things, but it has, I assume, not been approved, and whether it's been available to the public for comment or not, is what I'm concerned about.
No, and then, and I apologize, it wasn't included as an attachment here. I reiterated, you know, in my presentation and in the discussions here in the staff report, what's contained in the, in the plan.
But the plan isn't final yet.
But the plan isn't final yet. Right, correct, yes.
It's preliminary, and so the mitigation measure is designed to ensure that environmental management approves a final plan, or call it a plan, but that they approve it prior to operation of, of the site.
And what...
And the final plan will respond to any tweaks that are made to conditions today, if there are any.
If, if there are additions to the final waste management plan, I'm sure environmental management would take that into account when they're, when they're reviewing the plan and approving it.
And will there be a chance for public participation?
No.
I think that the environmental management outcome is actually really important to determining how many horses we can have there. Just doing some quick figuring, 40 horses at 45 pounds of poop a day is almost a ton a day every day, 365 days a year. That's a lot of crap. So, for us, I think that's, I'm just putting it out there. I think we can make some determinations just from this statement, but yeah, the environmental manager's going to have to do some work on this.
Let's see. I think the most of my, the rest of my questions for planning have to do with the resolution and so on. Hold off on those. Thank you.
Then, if everyone's ready, I'd like to invite the applicant or their representative to come up and give a brief statement, well, up to 15 minutes, to talk about your project.
Good morning, members of the board. I have, Madeline, I have this for you. It's a manure management plan. As we have done all along, we have a lot of, a lot of care and keeping around that. So sorry. Good morning, honorable members of the board. I am Lynette Smith-Covey, owner and operator of Four Horse Ranch. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today regarding our application. This meeting is the pinnacle of a lot of hard work. We are eager to be in compliance and in alignment with the community we have made our home. We love the people and the businesses around us. We are humble and honored by the outpour of support of those that love us and have made homes next to us and of our greater community. As you have heard today and in our previous meeting, we do a lot of charity work. We have been doing this for years, even though we only recently became a nonprofit. We have been involved with foster care since we were married, and that was a long time ago. It has colored everything we do. We are not simply a business, we are a family. We are also a nonprofit prevention program. Our 20-plus acres serves multiple purposes aligned with the rural residential zoning. We are an agricultural operation by definition, engaged in animal husbandry, gardening, beekeeping, and other agricultural activities since 2015. We operate a legitimate ag tourism, mobile trail ride business with proper licensing on public lands. We meet our clients at Burson Market because it's our favorite place to meet. It generates support to the west side of the county. It allows them to use the restroom, buy snacks, get water bottles, and then we go, they follow me to a local trail wherever we're going, and we ride there. We would, we would prefer to continue that model. The conditional use permit would allow us to meet somebody on an emergency basis if they were invited, but it would not be all-the-time thing for us. We are, our reputation in the community speaks for itself. While we may appear multifaceted in our activities, that's because we operate as a family, not merely as a business. We prioritize the well-being of children and animals over profit. As the saying goes, how do you make a small fortune in horses? You start with a large one. I assure you, we do not do this for financial gain. Clarifying some misunderstandings, just to touch on a few citation issues, the county has issued citations without clearly specifying violations and without understanding of what they were seeing. According to Calaveras County Code, agricultural operations and ag tourism are permitted uses in the zone without requiring a conditional use permit. These uses are not denoted with an asterisk in the code and would indicate the need for a cup. This and other issues resulted in a citation. We have been proven and have been diligently working on everything relating to the cup that is led today. The slow progress has been county protocol, not participation from us, or hard work by Madeline Flandreau. Compliance, although we disagree with the findings originally, we did work diligently with the county to be in compliance. We have since been and been operating in complete code compliance. We, we breed horses both for sale and for our personal use, as allowed in the RR zone, although by code we are grandfathered into and not limited to a certain number of horses. I assure you, we have a lot less than 50 on our property. Our actual number is 35 horses on the property. However, the county code does not recognize any horse under two years old, so if we counted it that way, it would actually be a lot less even than that number. We do not currently hold any events, much less ropings, as neighbors have claimed. We do not currently host lessons. We are even waiting to launch a website for a valid cup. A lot of the letters of support that you received were not actually from people that were in lessons. It was from people who knew about us, and some had had some interaction with us, but most of the letters that you received were not actually from lessons people. Inspection findings repeatedly disprove the baseless allegations against us and show us to actually be a well-run operation. We have never been guilty of fly infestation or a cesspool. We have never blocked the road so completely that an emergency vehicle could not get through. In fact, three full-size trucks can travel side-by-side down our road for a ways without issue. On April 10th, 2024, County Inspector Cody Anderson conducted a scheduled inspection of our property. His notes clearly stated, "From my investigation, I found all violations listed on the citation have been corrected." He also verified that our Facebook page did not mention anything that would violate our current business license. Since then, we have worked with Cody to know what actually happens on the ranch, who the gatherings are, and who is family. He knows the cars, trucks, and kids. He has cleared us of misconduct since then, and despite what the neighbors say. On 10/24, Matt Poole with Environmental Services came out unannounced for an inspection. He was investigating a cesspool in the yard, water that runs constantly, and a fly infestation. In his notes, he not only says none of this is true, he goes further and states that he was able to drive on the property with his windows down and had no flies in the car. Ms. Madeline of Planning Department stopped in to make sure that there was not illegal activities such as lessons and investigate the fly issue and the water runoff that was said to be flooding neighboring yards. She also found that the complaints were invalid. Rebecca and Ian of Animal Control have come out a few times as well. They also seem to feel lied to by complainants and cleared us of animal keeping. Ryan Hamery, the fire marshal, came out just one time. He was concerned about the road, emergency access, and fire dangers. He felt the road was more than adequate and absolved us of the fire danger complaint. Regarding the number of horses, we are currently allowed as many horses as we can take care of on our land, per the county code, as long as they are owned by us. We currently own the horses at Four Horse Ranch. They are for our personal use. We do not have over 40 horses on the property, although we would not be in violation if we did, as long as we could care for them. Currently, per the county code of, on horses, foals do not count in that number. We breed horses for sale and our personal use. We are allowed to breed horses in our zone. This causes us to be classified as an agricultural operation, as referred to in the application. We own our brood mares. We own the stallion. We do occasionally breed outside stallions, and our stallion leaves property to perform breeding to outside mares. Water cannot run day and night. The well was until recently on solar. Right now, it's on a generator. It cannot run if there is not enough light on solar. Our solar system malfunctioned and now is wired to a generator. The generator is dependent on fuel and cannot be left running for long periods of time. Anyone that says we are regularly wasting water is mistaken at best. We have constructed a 30-foot-wide road, which is an extra 10 feet. Ryan Hamery, a fire marshal, was supposed, was surprised to find our road was so wide. He agreed the road was more than adequate. Some neighbors use the road as their own spade way. We have had problems with neighbors demanding respect but not giving respect. I don't know why they laugh when they hit our cat or get excited about spraying rocks at kids and horses. The road issue has been a source of contention. This contention has been created by these neighbors. It finally settled down after one of them intentionally hit a guest on the road, and afterwards, my guest did not want to press charges. After this incident, a lot of behavior causing contention regarding the road stopped. MyValleySprings.com makes a point in their letter against us that allowing a cup in the zone sets a precedent for other programs to pop up and disrupt the zone. We allege that other programs already exist. None of them, to our knowledge, have a cup. None of them, to our knowledge, have a cup. Most are in the RR zones. One is AR zone. All have fewer acres than us. They pop up regularly advertising boarding lessons, various trainers, camps, and training services. Some have been in business long before us, some came and went while we were here, and some recently started this last year. Talking to these businesses over the last year, the general belief is that applying for a cup is pointless because the county will not approve it, and all these other ranches operate under radar, just as we did for many years for a cup. When we originally researched the planning department back in two thousand and sixteen, we were assured there was no need. We do not wish, we, we do now wish that we had listened and gone forward with a cup many years ago. Setting a precedent to award a cup for any ranch that wishes to make all the required accommodations and work with the county to be responsible, compliant business in the community should be welcome. Unfortunately, we have faced repeated unfounded allegations from certain neighbors who seem determined to remove us from our property. We have been repeatedly investigated for the year, we have been repeatedly investigated over the years and never found negligent in care of our land or animals. We have been falsely accused of operating a cesspool in our yard, having a fly infestation, building additional stables while awaiting permit decisions, blocking road access, not being able to afford our property on our own money, getting the neighbor home insurance canceled, having an unpermitted number of horses, hosting events day and night, and a lot of other things that are equally nonsense. Can we all agree to put these ridiculous, baseless, fabricated, malicious, ignorant ramblings behind us? We would like to request a fee-based system. If a neighbor wants to make another complaint against us, we suggest they either be charged a fee to complain or a fine for a false complaint. While I've been working on the cup application to comply with the county directives, I respectfully ask the board to carefully review the evidence and adopt the mitigation negative declaration, approve the Planning Commission Resolution two zero two five dash zero zero four, approving conditional use permit, two zero two four dash zero one three, to permit the operation of a private equestrian facility for either an undefined number, as is actually permitted currently, or up to forty horses, on APN forty-eight dash zero zero nine dash zero five two, confirm our right to operate a nonprofit 501(c) in the RR zone as a private equestrian facility, allow us to use a website to promote our nonprofit, and start our fundraisers as we deem necessary, confirm our legitimate agricultural operation and ag tourism venture as defined in the county code, and allow the Chamber of Commerce as well as other multiple agencies to support us. Since a cup is deemed necessary, approve it with language that discourages further unfounded reports and allegations, such as the penalty for anyone who willfully misrepresents allegations of misconduct related to the property or situation. Remove the negative false allegations against us in the form of a complaint letter from the Calaveras website. We do wish to always comply. When we were out of compliance, it was only because we believed we were complying just under a different understanding of the code. There have been many misunderstandings along the way on both sides. We simply want peace. We wish to follow all the rules relating to us. We are happy to live in governance of others. We ask that everyone else be held to the same standard. We want to continue serving our community as a nonprofit for disadvantaged youth, providing a supportive environment for foster children, and maintaining our agricultural operations. We respectfully request the county to stop the weaponization of the county system and a blatant waste of resources, and ask neighbors to stop monitoring and calling on our ranch as they claim they do in our letter, in their letters. We have enough traffic that if there was a real reason to be reported, we would most likely would be reported on by a different source. We have never been reported on by a different source. Calaveras County recently donated a hundred thousand dollars to support ag tourism through the TOT tax to the west side of the county. We embody the very type of operation this initiative claims aims to support. There are many people throughout the county that would love to see us allowed to operate in the west end of Calaveras. Some of them even coined the phrase "ground-zero neighbors." Thank you for your time and consideration. We hope you will agree with the neighbors closest to us and the broader Calaveras County community that Four Horse Ranch is good for Calaveras County. We welcome any necessary mitigation measures. I am happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for your time and for your service.
Any questions?
I'd like to start off by saying, for my understanding of what we're doing here today is the past is past. We're just looking at what is proposed now, and we're going to assume that what conditions we apply will be complied with.
Of course they will.
And, and so that, much of what you were talking about, the past problems that have happened, and that's not really before us today. We dealt with that earlier as the administrative hearing board, but what's proposed today is maybe one to six, one to five clients per day coming in, learning basic horse husbandry and communication with animals, and that very positive thing, that a lot of the affirmative comment letters have stressed that you are performing, in those, currently, in those areas, you're performing a very commendable public service. Now, other issues that arisen in the past is not what I'm looking at today, and I'm concerned that we have adequate conditions to make sure that things are done well, but with one to five clients per day, one to six volunteers or employees to help those clients, and three birthday parties a year with all this, with people invited, not advertising for people to come in, is, those activities, subject to what else we're going to be hearing today, are very commendable and minimally environmentally impactful. So, one question I would have for you is, how many horses are really required for those activities?
When Madeline and I discussed it before, we said forty. Excuse me. Forty was an appropriate number. It's two per acre. It's, it's enough to be able to do my breeding, my trail rides, and handle any client things. We don't want to overwork our horses. So when we have horses that need to do a trail ride, like I may do a twelve-person trail ride, I don't want to ask those same horses to do a three-person, a four-person later that day, or maybe even the next day, depending on what they handled that day.
So for the, for the client services that you're providing on the property, that would only entail a few horses, right?
We, it depends. So there's different things that we do for different people. For instance, several of my children, several of my children have horses on the property, so they count, like, in the number, right? So like, Bree has a horse, Navea has a horse. Some of those horses do not work for other people that want to come, so Bree's horse is not an easy horse to ride. So you would need different numbers, like, it changes, so the number changes, and then on top of that, with the training, we have horses that come and go. We would never need to exceed forty, but...
But, but for those client purposes that have been described in this, ten horses would be sufficient, right? I mean, just to provide variety for...
Probably, yeah.
I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not proposing that we limit you to ten horses.
Right, right. Ten, twelve. Yeah, you probably need closer to fifteen, but yeah, you could do it.
Then, Madeline, could you put on the screen the, I mean, this is, what you just had on the screen is the overall thing. You had another one that was more detailed of where the paddocks are.
Right, right here. There you go.
Now, could you take us through that? Are these the paddocks where the horses are?
Currently, yes.
Currently kept?
Yeah. They, we can rotate, we can move, we can move to other places. Some of the higher up to your right on the, is all downhill, so we don't, we can't use that in certain weather conditions, like, for instance, right now, the horses will sink to their knees. As you all know, Calaveras has two types of land. We have hardpan and we have quicksand. So, some of the property, especially property further back, so if you look at the top of the picture and off to the left, there is a large property over there. That property is kind of on the far corner. It's accessed by the neighbor roadway area. That property can't even see activity on our property because of the way the land is situated. Water doesn't run there, there's, there's no, we can see their house, they can see our house, kind of, but they really can't see anything beyond that.
I have a question about the paddocks themselves.
Oh, yeah, sorry. The, the neighbors further down in the middle kind of can be, are closer to some of those paddocks, and then we have the paddocks over to the right, that's where most of the horses are, and those paddocks are set back off the road and they have no, like, they don't, they drain downhill into that beautiful greenbelt area.
But the paddocks themselves have no vegetation on them?
Mostly correct, yeah. They do have a little bit that grows in them, but whenever we see vegetation growing, we like to rotate some horses out and let it, let it kind of do some recovery and then put them back.
And, now, Madeline, you've probably done the math here, if you add up all those acreage...
It's approximately an acre and a half.
Acre and a half of...
And this is really rough. This was just me using our GIS and using their site plan and sort of estimating the shape and sizes of things.
Under two acres of the property is the actual paddock, and there's no, there are no barns or stables that would provide cover for these horses, correct?
No, there's, there's some shelters. There's no barns or stables, correct, but there is shelter. There's trees, there's, there's a lean-to.
But that's not within the paddock, correct?
It's all on the edges of the paddock, some are in the paddock. So in the front of the area, which actually, that, Madeline, you don't have the front one outlined, but in that one, there's several trees. There are trees in the other ones further up. There's a shelter built in the one further away where there's no tree access.
Then, in the staff report, it refers to this guide that's put out by UC Davis Veterinary Medicine, Minimum Standards of Horse Care in the State of California. Do you feel that you are in compliance with all those standards?
Yes.
So you would have no problem with a condition on this?
No.
On the CUP that you must comply?
Animal control and environmental control have also done investigations, both have found us adequate, in our care and keeping of the manure, of the pastures, of the care of the, the condition of the animals.
Now, there's, mention how with the, with the manure mitigation provisions, that the paddocks would be scraped and then put into piles of manure. How does that make the odor any better?
It allows it to dry out. It gives us, what you do is you turn it regularly, and by turning it regularly, it helps it break down. Manure is really just dried, this manure is really just dried chewed grass and with some stomach digestion in it. Really, that's what it is. It's hay, horses eat it, they're not, they're herber, they're straight herbivore, they don't eat meat. When you pile it and then you start to turn it, you, we have free-range chickens despite the fact that our hawks have a taste for them. We, we allow those chickens to help break it up, so they're constantly, you know, scraping and pecking, and then we spread it into larger areas that then it turns into dirt. So the manure, the odor is really extremely minimal. Yes, it does smell like horse, especially after a rain, but it's not a heavy, overwhelming livestock smell.
And those, in order to promote the decomposition, they are open to the air, the piles?
Yes.
I see in the valley, these huge mountains...
Right.
Covered with tar.
Well, when they do that, what they are doing is they are putting pipe in there that has holes, and then they're putting that into a tank, and they're collecting the methane from the manure. When you see that, that's what that is.
I see.
We're not collecting methane. Yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay. Who else would like to ask a question before we let the public speak?
What about animal services? Animal services?
We can invite them up, but I think we should hear from the public.
That's fine.
So, you guys are getting ready. Does anybody have any further questions of Lynette before we let her sit down? Okay. Take a breath, sit down. Okay. So, commissioners, would you like to hear from environmental services or from code compliance, or should we go ahead and hear from the public?
I'm good with the public.
Yeah, the public sounds good.
Me too. Okay. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak, actually, sir, just one moment. Can you raise your hand if you're going to want to speak today during the public comment? Okay. So, that's not overwhelming. So come on up, you'll each have five minutes to speak. You don't need to use it all, and if I could just ask you all to be respectful, considerate of everyone else who is here, and just of everyone's time. So if what you have to say is exactly the same as what somebody said before, just add your own personal spin to it and don't necessarily repeat every single thing that was said. You can say, "Yes, I agree with the person before me or earlier." So, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ralph Faust. I live at sixty-eight thirty-five Os Patel Road in Valley Springs, actually Wallace, but Valley Springs, yes. My neighbor directly to the west of me is Valley Farms. Valley's Farms is, is a, is a company that does irrigation, but also, this parcel is residential, it's not commercial. They park all their equipment on that property. Forgive me, I have a loan problem, so it's hard to speak. One of the things is they have weddings and parties on that property, which, they play music, music so loud that people for a whole mile around complain, and Calaveras County Sheriff's Office said there's nothing they can do about it. One of the restrictions in that party is no music. Now, would like to ask the board why that restriction is there.
Okay. You're not commenting on the parcel?
I am, because what it is, I'm trying to use this as an example, why the board can restrict music during a birthday party, and that's one of the restrictions that you folks are putting up there.
I, I...
I didn't see that.
So...
Okay, and one other thing...
You can't answer questions, and this isn't specific to this.
Okay, one other question I have around that parcel, how many people have horses and cows that contribute to the fly problem?
Sir, I just want to redirect you a little bit.
Yes, ma'am.
You are welcome to come back and, and speak during the public comment about your specific situation.
I'm not coming, I'm coming about Four Horse Ranch because you are restricting them from having music at a party, and I want to know why if Calaveras County Sheriff's Office says there's no restrictions on music, why you can restrict them from having music?
I can maybe, I can maybe help out.
Talk about the sound ordinance.
The, the part of the project description that says that outdoor amplified music is not part of this project description was really to then not have to analyze noise impacts and noise study for this conditional use permit per SEQA. The project description is pre-mitigated to not have outdoor amplified music so that it didn't need to be analyzed and addressed and probably mitigated per this conditional use permit.
So, if the Calaveras County Sheriff's Office says it's illegal, how can you deny it?
What is illegal?
It's, it's legal to have music that people a mile away from you are complaining to the sheriff's office.
This is specific to this conditional use permit? This is.
So, in other words, you're just using that as an excuse to shut them down.
Sir?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
I'm going to respond to this just for general information. Calaveras County has a noise ordinance which regulates the noise.
That's suitably, forget that.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak to this item? Come on up.
Hi. Um, my name is Lisa Krebs. And I have been a Calaveras County resident since August of 2013. And I live in the most western part of the county. So, uh, Calaveras County claims to need prevention programs, activities for children, and additional tourism in the west end of the county. The Calaveras government has recently funded the Calaveras Chamber with a hundred thousand in the TOT revenue to promote tourism to the west end of Calaveras County. Four Horse Ranch is an exemplification of these goals realized. I'm more nervous than I think I am, hang on.
It's okay, relax.
Okay, let me take a deep breath. So, I have personally benefited from the programs and services provided by Four Horse Ranch. I recently acquired a thoroughbred and it required some, somebody who was experienced to train. My horse trainer is a young lady named Ariana, who acquired her equestrian training from Four Horse Ranch in her youth. Four Horse Ranch recognized Ariana's innate talents, invested in her horse training and lesson skills that resulted in a multi-talented young woman who has become a wonderful contributor to both the Calaveras business, community, and tourism promotion growth, and who continues to help enrich the lives of both humans and animals, especially horses. A recent tragic injury sustained by my thoroughbred required that he needed to go to Pioneer for emergency medical attention and rehabilitation. I do not own a horse trailer, but I follow Four Horse Ranch on Facebook and I knew that they assisted with equine emergencies. So, I reached out to Lynette on a Sunday at eight PM and she came to my immediate rescue. Lynette's skill and understanding of horse psychology and medical care in a highly stressful emergency situation where I thought I was going to lose my horse, set the stage for successful surgical treatment and recovery. Thanks to the wonderful training my horse received from Ariana, Lynette's protege, my horse responded extremely well to Lynette's comfort, emergency transports, and veterinary, um, treatment. I have both Ariana and Lynette to thank for the full recovery of my horse. Oh, this is going to go much smoother in my head. Four Horse Ranch is a necessary business resource and tourism driver for the west end of Calaveras County, where their positive impact goes far beyond their horse riding and training programs, which primarily caters to both local and tourist families with special needs children. I strongly encourage you all to consider the numerous positive contributions Four Horse Ranch brings to all of Calaveras County, especially the west end. Please embrace this business into the Valley Springs business community and grant them the conditional use permit and any other approvals they need to be able to do what they do best to continually serve the community, tourists, and families, and children who love Calaveras County. Thank you for your time.
Come on up.
Hello, my name is Sandy Hagel and my dad is Vern Hall. He is a neighbor in Calaveras County. We've been up here since the early seventies. My dad says one of his biggest regrets is selling the property. Because here we are now, so. But first off, I want to say I do respect Lynette and I do respect her husband. Very nice people, good people. Known her for a long time, I've worked with Lynette. Um, a few issues that I have and my dad has, um, I live in Angels Camp. My dad has health problems and, like I said, cannot be here today. So, if, the maps that you have here, up here, that you're showing, would be great if it really looked like that, but it doesn't. Forty horses, if she says forty horses, I'll go along with that. But sometimes it's a little more, sometimes it's a little less. It's too many horses. It's not a three, three trucks driveway, it's not that. Lynette, we've known each other for a long time. We've been, you know, respectful to each other. She just sent me a text the other day and she says, "What'd you take a picture of?" I didn't respond. Because what I like to do is respond here and say, "You shouldn't be putting your hay in the driveway and burning stuff and cars are going through and you're smelling you-know-what as you're on your way up." Please don't do that. If you want to be a good neighbor, be a good neighbor. Clean it up. What she should have done with that property that she acquired years ago, is she really just did poor planning. See where her house is? I know she wanted her business around her house and that's great, I, I would too. But when you're, when you're living there, and I've grown up there since the seventies, you know, and it's not my dad's property anymore, you know? It's sold, it's gone, right? But he said that was his big mistake. She should have taken her business and built it off down to the right. Not everything just surrounded by her house. Her house is in disarray. I mean, if you're coming up there, if you're there and you're just there for one time a month to do a, a training or whatever, you don't see everything that's going on. You don't see what these neighbors are subjecting themselves to. It's not right. It's almost, there's a word I want to use, but I just don't know if I can use it here because it would be a little embarrassing. And I don't want to embarrass Lynette or her husband. I'm very passionate about this. My dad's getting up in his older years and, um, he's got some health issues. I'm going up there a lot to see him. I never drive fast. Sometimes I chuckle to myself and I just go, you know? I just wish it would be a little cleaner. But in all honesty, I know she wants to make a business. I know she wants to help the community and the kids and her family and teach them things. I get it. But just go about a little bit different. Tone it down. Get rid of some of these horses. I won't tell you what I just saw the other day and it wasn't a rainy day. Here's the, here's the ground, okay? This much of, and the horses are just in it. That's not right. It made me think of something that you see on TV that's just not right. I know things happen, there's no barns, there's no covers, there's barely any trees. She just did poor planning. But I respect her. I know that she's here and fighting for her rights, but I've also got to speak up on behalf of my dad and the community. It's not safe for the animals. If you guys deem it, go ahead.
Sandy, just to be clear, does your father live on one of the houses?
Yes, he does. Yep, my parent, my family bought, whole family bought a hundred and twenty acres years ago. And then some of my dad's, uh, my dad's grandfather passed, uh, father passed away and my aunt passed away and my great aunt passed away. And Lynette's on some of those properties. I, I think it's great. I, I'm all about the development. But be a good, clean, tidy neighbor. Not a, you know? We all want the best. So, anyway, I got twenty-six seconds, seconds left. I want to thank you guys for listening and good luck.
Who else would like to speak?
I'll start off the girls. Uh, my name's Sarah Lakin. Um, I am, I guess, family with the ranch and everybody. I started off, um, meeting them through, I was a foster youth in Calaveras County. Um, I went back into foster care at fifteen due to abuse. Um, and when I moved in with my best friend's family in twenty eighteen, August of twenty eighteen, they lived, um, at the log cabin at the bottom of the property. Um, and so, that's how I met Lynette and the, the ranch family. Um, my parents at the time, even being in foster care, I didn't have, they still had rights over me. So, the, my social workers wanted to put me in, um, therapy. And I didn't necessarily want to go to therapy as a sixteen-year-old, you know? And they said, "Okay, what about animal therapy? You like animals, you want to ride horses. Let's get you into, um, cowgirl, horse speak." I said, "I live on a ranch. Why, why can't I ride horses and have horse therapy with Four Horse Ranch? I know these horses, I know these people, I'd love to do that." So, they did. I was, um, in school at Mountain Oaks. And with Mountain Oaks, they're a charter school. So, you can, you know, do some homeschool, do some classes. And for PE, I was able to ride horses. I'd have to take videos, log what I did, um, and riding horses. My parents didn't allow me to ride horses. So, what we settled with was, um, groundwork. So, Lynette has taught me a lot of groundwork and how to work with horses. And I will say, I'm not a great rider, but I can totally lunge a horse, walk a horse, whatever you need, clean its feet. I walked up to some of the girls lunging a horse and I said, "Hey, you need to talk with Lynette because that horse is, it needs, it needs some help. It, it looks like it's hurting." And that's something I can look at a horse's body and know something's wrong with it because Lynette has taught me so much about it. And I just, I don't know, I want to say like Lynette's house and family has been a safe haven for me. Living across the driveway from her, if I got in a fight with my sister or my parents, I'd go to Lynette and say, "Hey, I need, I need to ride a horse. I need to walk with a horse, I need to do something, I need to talk." And I'd go over there and take a breather so that I didn't get into trouble or anything. And I will say, you know, there's been times, it does get muddy. It pours down and it'll be muddy and it happens. We do a lot over there and we do a lot of cleaning. And I, I will say that the properties, the, the pastures do look like that. And, um, they might be a little bit bigger than what's on the screen, but they are lined up like that. Um, they've done a lot of work getting sand in the arena so that it's not mud, getting more gravel so there's less mud, putting a lot of work into the property so that they can have a nice property and be there for the horses, be there for the youth, the, the neighbors, try and make it better for them. I will say there's been times that, I, I have a two-year-old and I have to constantly, you know, a two-year-old, they wander. I have to constantly hold his hand because at the ranch, people come flying down the driveway going twenty, thirty miles an hour. And I've had to move my child out of the road. It's a big road, but I'm crossing the road and they see me. And they come flying down the road twenty, thirty miles an hour. It's a gravel driveway. You could go five miles an hour, especially around children and animals. And there's just, it's a big road, I will say. I, I, I personally want to go right now and take a video of the road and the pasture so that you can see that it is like that. And it's not a horrendous property. It is a beautiful property. And I did my senior photos there and I wouldn't have done them there if it wasn't a pretty place. It's, Four Horse Ranch is family. And that's, that's all I want to say.
Good morning, honorable board. My name is Rochelle Smith-Covey. I'm the daughter-in-law of Jeremy and Lynette Smith-Covey. I'm married to their son. Um, I wanted to ask you a question before I actually give my speech because I'm not going to touch on something that doesn't need to be addressed. Would you like addressing of the insurance being canceled of the neighbor's property?
We don't actually answer questions.
Okay, okay.
But, you know, it's up to you, whatever you think is important for us to know.
Okay, because I don't want to address something that's already, if it's, if it's done in the past, I don't want to bring up a, I don't want to be a dead horse. So, um, um, I, so I will actually put aside my commentary about the insurance. Um, I do work for Jordan Insurance Services and I did speak to my manager and they do give me permission to speak about insurance if I needed to. But I also wanted to address the property. Um, I have been, I've been living in Calaveras for twenty-nine years. My parents own fifteen acres off of Quailix Road, which is a mile as the crow flies from Patriot Way. Um, and our property is very unique. Uh, living in Calaveras County, it is not one size fits all. Um, with the topography and the uniqueness of Calaveras County soil, where that easement is, the left of it is very solid ground. In fact, in the summertime, it is hard pan. And my husband and I, uh, we had a reception on the property. And I wanted to get married. On the right-hand side of the easement, as Sarah had previously mentioned, would be a, what she stated would be an ideal spot for horses. It's not an ideal spot for horses. Uh, when it comes to Calaveras County, you cannot just put horses on any part of the property. In fact, in that area, vehicles have gotten stuck. You can see there's that green part of the strip. Um, and that is because there is, there is an underground, um, water pan. And with that being underground water, vehicles, even in the middle of like the spring or summertime, will sink in that area. Therefore, it is not a, it is not a very good area for horses. And I will also state that to update this image right here, we do move horses around and we have older horses that are in their twenties and thirties that do not work regularly. And they do enjoy like semi-retirement in, um, on families' properties. So, I, we've, we've moved some of my horses to my parents' properties so that way they can enjoy retirement, they can eat lots of green grass. And then for the summertime, because my parents' place is a little bit too hot, we'll move horses back onto Lynette's property. So, there are horses that are coming and going from this property and that is because we like to make sure that the horses are in the best health as much as possible. So, that's why some horses will be moved from the property. They'll eat lots of green grass. We got to make sure our babies grow big and strong. Um, myself, my baby Buck, he just turned two years old. He's a quarter horse. He has been moved to my friend's property in order to see him to grow a little bit, a little bit bigger. So, I, there are times where there might be as low as twenty horses, as low as fifteen horses. And there will be times where you'll see as many as thirty-five horses. But also during that time, many of those are fillies, colts, horses that are being sold and moving off property. So, that is where I would like to address. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Lea Piana. Uh, I go by Lea. This is my first time speaking publicly, so I'm kind of nervous. Um, and I am also the foster child of Lynette Jeremy Smith-Covey. I was fourteen years old when I first came to Four Horse Ranch. I'm so sorry. It seems like forever ago and I was so young. I was alone and scared when I first came here and I was also isolated from my family. I had no idea what to expect. I was, I was in and out of group of foster homes most of my life. Four Horse Ranch is the only foster home that I've been placed at for the longest period of time. I was at, at Four Horse Ranch, I've learned so many important things. I learned how to ignore bad talk, take care of my belongings, and effectively communicate my feelings and needs. Most importantly, learning how to ride horses taught me to control my anger. Being at Four Horse, being at Four Horse Ranch, I feel loved. I don't need to prove myself anymore. I have also learned how to handle conflict and that caused me to want to speak today. I hate, I hate the way how the neighbors complain about us riding our horses and taking up pictures and wanting pictures of us without our consent. This is a trigger for me and also lying about our property. This is, that is how we align our property. That is exactly what our property looks. We do have some. We do have some changes in there, but it's not major changes. My aunt, my Aunt Lynette has advised me to ignore it and leave it alone while she handled the fight for us. Now with this hearing, I feel like this is a chance for me to stand up and confront the situation. Lynette and Jeremy are not hiding behind us, we are hiding behind them. Please stop this childish and scary behaviors before it escalates. If they, if giving them the cup stopped the situation, then we definitely need this cup. I'm about to turn 18 and move on and start a new life. My future is bright and I am excited. This has happened because of my time at, at the Four Horse Ranch family. I want a four horse to be here in the future because I want to bring my future husband and kids to this, to this amazing ranch and be a part of this amazing family. Just as others currently do so, as Sia, Sarah, and Lane. This is really important to me because I want them to have an amazing grandma and grandpa and a family that I never really had. Thank you for your time. I am Lea Luanne Piana.
My name is Christopher Butner. I am the publisher of Calaveras2026election.com. I reside in Murphy's. My life savings, my family, and my future is invested in Calaveras County. Whenever I address this government, I always read from a script, but I'm going off-script. Your chair holds leadership positions with three different tourist promotion and business bureaus. She is the president of the Murphy's Business Association. She sits on the Board of Directors of the Calaveras Business Bureau and she's the interim president of the Yavits Past Scenic Byway Association. I will let Julie Moss Lewis decide if conflict of interest exists, where she should be hearing anything on this planning commission relative to any tourism promotion business and development. Therefore, I'm segueing right into my prepared statement. As an entrepreneur who wanted to create beneficial Calaveras tourism businesses like Jeremy and Lynette Smith-Covey, I too, for five years, have been the target of personal and professional attacks, including defamation of character, tortious interference, restraint of trade, trade libel, false light, and trademark infringement constituting numerous civil and constitutional rights violations by a wide range of colluded individuals in both governmental and business bureau leadership roles. I am here today to support these good people. As an award-winning entertainment and hospitality marketing specialist with over 40 years of real-world results-oriented experience, I can prove failed Calaveras County governmental and business bureau leaders have cost Calaveras tens of millions of dollars in unrealized annual tourism revenue since 2019. Inclusive of the Calaveras Office of Economic Development, there are 15 recognized business bureaus in Calaveras that in my professional opinion cannot rub two nickels together to make 10 cents. These business bureaus, as well as government agencies and offices, need to be purged of ineffective and colluded leadership, restaffed and consolidated into financially viable and sustainable entities with a common mission to support existing and emerging innovative Calaveras businesses like Four Horse Ranch, as well as bring new businesses and money tourists to Calaveras. I allege the willful and malicious business suppression by the hostile behavior by individuals cited in the report I emailed to all of you yesterday cost not just me, but Calaveras County, my two viable tourism businesses, at a personal cost in excess of $170,000 in legal fees and other expenses depriving Calaveras County of millions, tens of millions of dollars over five years in tourism revenue. Jeremy and Lynette Smith-Covey are now going through what I have been put through for five years by I allege self-serving government officials, legacy business owners, and business bureau leaders. I can no longer tolerate seeing any business owner, as wonderful as these people, who want to make Calaveras a better place, be subjected to what I have endured for five years. The Planning Department and this Planning Commission needs to prioritize business development. I am respectfully requesting you all vote in favor to do the right thing so Four Horse Ranch may establish itself as a viable Calaveras-based tourism business. I am also, with respect, demanding the Calaveras Planning Commission immediately investigate my allegations of willful and endemic suppression of business development by one of your own that I explicitly described in my emails of January 14th and March 12th, 2025. Today, I respectfully request the Calaveras Government and this Planning Commission start working for its citizens. My name is Christopher Butner, publisher of Calaveras2026election.com. Let me repeat that, write it down, Calaveras2026election.com.
I'll try to make it short and sweet. I would like to address all future complaints by fixing the property to the point where there's no possible complaints could be made. My goal is to make the property, I do, my name is Troy Smith-Covey. I'm the son of Lynette and Jeremy. I built our arena, I've built our pastures, I've built our hay barn. I have plans on future renovations to make everything on our property look of greater value than it is today. Every fence, we got started with what we could afford to build. We did a lot of hot wire and, a lot of hot wire and T-post fencing. And over the years, I've come into building barbed wire fence for miles over the Calaveras County. And I have created a new system for our fencing of barbless wire that looks great on the property. My goal is to make all of our fencing into either welded, into either welded oil pipe fencing or our barbless wire to put a nice hay barn up on our property, to do all the things that make our property look better, to be able to pay someone to be on property, cleaning up property every week, to have someone doing something. A lot of our funds have been tied up in dealing with this. I've been putting together funds for projects for this and I've been told to put off all improvements to the property because of this. So even though I've put money together to build more of what I've done, which is make the property look nicer, I've been told I'm not allowed to do it until we resolve the solution. My goal is to make the property so nice that we don't have complaints. And when you guys approve this, we'll be on the same page with making this property, exactly that, where there won't be complaints. So I hope that you guys can improve this and move fast so we can get started on making this property even nicer and provide an even better life for the awesome people here supporting, the people that are affected by it, make better results for our horses, our people, just for everyone, including the neighbors around us. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Brianna Julie Montiel. I'm saying my whole name because after being placed, Four Horse Ranch, I found myself. Before coming here, I was in a failed adoption. Do you know what that is? It's when someone takes you in and says you're family, but you're not. Then they send you away. I was no stranger to rejection and hurt. I was very angry when I got to Four Horse. I was in a kind of, in an ugly spot and it showed. But at Four Horse, I got to adopt a goat. Her name is Peanut Butter, we call her PB. You can't stay mad when you sit with the goats. I have, I have more than one dog that follow me around and won't let me be sad without being in my face. I have a horse and he gives me the best hugs. I have a community that loves me. They tell me I'm beautiful and funny. I have a horse. You guys, I've never expected in my craziest dreams to have a horse. He is, I don't know, he's kind of crazy, but he's perfect to me. He pretends to be scared to get out of things. I'm, I'm scared, but have to do things anyway. Like today, standing up here, talking to you guys. Riding that horse has taught me to be able to stand up and be heard. It's taught me to handle my emotions. My foster mom, Lynette, supports me playing soccer too, and that has given me community also. Now that I think about it, I have a huge community. Soccer, horses, church, and the ranch. The ranch is a huge family for me. The first time in my life, I have grandparents. How awesome is that? I still mess up and I'm scared of what my future might be. But watching my foster mom handle an uncertain future while I've been here has taught me the most important thing anyone could ever know. Are you listening? Let them, let God, let them talk, let them think, let them be mean or whatever they want. Let God fight the battle, let God solve your problems. You just be careful to, to love the people who God asks you to, even when it's hard. I watch her do that to neighbors. I watch her do that for us. Because of Four Horse, I have a family, both bio-adopted. I have a future. I plan eventually competing to be a rodeo queen, compete at horse shows, as a serious competitor, and attend college, maybe even with my horse. I want to get a really well-paying job and help out my niece when she needs me. I want this ranch to be here for the next, for the next reject kid and any adults that need them. Please grant the cup so my family could get to do what they are good at and stop the neighbors from causing all this unwanted drama. Because of this battle and other personal battles, I have given my life to God and I'm willing to let Him. I am Brianna and Four Horse Ranch is my family. Thank you for letting me speak today.
I, I would like to say something. You are definitely no reject. You are super.
I want to go first because I'm going to talk about her. Like you directed, I'm going to ignore the first half of my talk because it just reiterated all of the mitigations that we've already been through. So I'm going to hand that to you, knowing that you've already addressed all of that. The financial cost to this family has been enormous, staggering even. And the expenses continue to increase, to continue to go up. With every complaint, they have to do something else, which is fine. They're happy to do that. I'm just mentioning that it's really expensive to follow up with these complaints, especially when they're mostly unfounded. It's caused the family emotional trauma as well. You know, back when they were counting the horses early on and they said, you can't, can't have that many, they had to put down horses, beloved horses. That was an emotional trauma. Thank God you reversed that decision. Thank you for doing that. I've watched these volunteers, many of whom are female and they're foster kids, some have been diagnosed with autism, I won't say which ones, doesn't matter, they are, and they're doing well. I've watched these kids manage their problems and manage their situations. I've, I've watched them overcome tremendous barriers, physical, emotional, and even spiritual barriers that they've crossed and managed themselves so well. I've watched, I've watched them grow and blossom into young adults. And we're proud of one young protege who has been accepted to the prestigious UC Davis Another student recently started her own grooming business in the Bay Area. One young man who is here today, Lane, became a Class A truck driver and he's working for a large international company. He came through the house, he came through the home, not as a foster kid, but as a kid from under a bridge. "Come, stay with us," Troy said. "We'll be okay, we'll help you out." He graduated high school and he's gone on, he has a family and he has a wonderful job. Others have gone on to raise family and pursue their equine passions as hobbies. Some are here to speak today, some already have. Calaveras County was specifically chosen where my grandchildren would be raised and where we would build this business. Alternatives to moving to another county or to move out of state altogether would be a great loss to the equine industry in Calaveras County. Please don't make that happen. It's my hope that you'll grant Four Horse Ranch the cup in order for them to continue to be a vital part of equine tourism industry in the west end of Calaveras County for years to come. Thank you for your time.
Hello, planning commissioners. I am here today afresh on the behalf of Four Horse, Four Horse Ranch Helping Hands nonprofit, not just as one of the many children under their care, but as someone who has represented and helped lead the agricultural community of Calaveras County, the San Joaquin region, and the state of California. I have represented chairs as a Green Hand, Chapter, Chapter, and Regional Officer for Bret Hart FFA and the National Young Farmers Association, participating at regional, state, and national events. Agriculture is an overwhelming aspect in Calaveras County, as all of you know, and I am one of the young adults fighting to aid in a better, greener future. I am a first-generation college student in my family. Before coming to the ranch, I had never thought of a career in agriculture, much less having a college education at all. Now, I am almost complete with my first year of college and will be a registered veterinary technician before the spring 2026 semester. Four Horse Ranch recognized and fostered my ambition in a way that my family and the people in my life did not. My biological parental situation had stripped me of the goals I had of a higher education. There was even a low point where I was unsure of being able to complete high school. But then I was able to find placement at Four Horse Ranch and everything turned around. Riding horses has been an extremely important part of my therapy and mental health. When Planning Director Brett Sampson tried to impose that only people who live at the ranch be allowed to ride, it would have excluded me, as well as others that are in the greater foster care system of Four Horse Ranch. My Auntie Net fought for me to be able to continue to ride. It might sound like my aunt is not compliant when she stands up for our personal right, but I can guarantee you that it is always with one of us in mind that she does so. I'm not trying to get scientific here, by the way, for a second, but if the dirt is down here and the mud is up here, our horses would be physically sick. I'll run fecal water tests on the horses. That is not the case. It is in compliance that all lessons have stopped and therefore I am able to make, not able to make an extra income for college expenses. Although I have been blessed to be awarded with many agricultural-based scholarships, it's something else that Lynette has helped me with. If anyone has any suggestions for grants, let me know. But my main reason for being here is this wonderful ranch needs to be here when other children need it. My family has worked diligently to comply with and provide everything the county has asked for. I am hopeful that the county makes good on its promise to permit people to do ag activities such as this equestrian ranch. This county believes in the future of agriculture and that's what this ranch is trying to do.
Sorry, a little nervous. Good morning. My name is Jason Freeman. My address is 3049 Patriot Way. I live directly behind the 20-acre property, actively running an illegal business. I live directly behind the property. Probably there's no neighbor besides me and Vern that have to deal with this issue. Once again, we as neighbors are complaining about the illegal activity conducted at the Four Horse Ranch in Burson, California. The letter that I submitted and I read last July, last year, are still my main thoughts and concerns. At that meeting, the county instructed the owners of the ranch that there were, have to have no activity on the 20 acres. From that meeting in July until today, they have not stopped or complied with the demands of the planning board. They for some reason think it's okay to break the law and intentionally disregard the laws and ordinances of the county. Unfortunately, the burden has been on the evil neighbors as they like to call us. I and other concerned neighbors have had to monitor and inform the county daily with texts, emails, pictures of the illegal business that is being conducted at this property. I would hope that you have been notified by code enforcement regarding this information because we've sent this to Cody and Doug Oliver. One would think that the Smiths-Coveys would be on the One would think that the Smith-Coveys would be on their best behavior while trying to obtain a CUP permit. Regrettably, things got much worse for myself and other adjoining neighbors. They built more stables and now have more horses. The riders and vehicles have doubled in size. The manure is piled right, for some reason, right at the entrance of the property, which is a huge health concern. When the manure is piled from some, when you have 40-plus horses, and they do have 40-plus horses, you should have a plan that what you'll do with manure. Basically, the problem is that they have purchased a property and fortunately does not zone for the business that they want to conduct. They have not stated to neighbor, no, they have stated to neighbors, I don't care what the county says, we will do what we want to do out here. This is their attitude. They love to play the victim, but in reality, the neighbors are the victims. I'm sure the folks coming out to ride, take lessons, and board horses are great people, but they are not neighbors. Like all these people that spoke today, that's a wonderful thing. The kids, I think that's great. I personally have nothing against Jeremy and Lynette. But I'd like to do one more thing. I would like to briefly address the once beautiful piece of property. It was clearly stated last July, but the that the board, that the property is zoned rural residential and not suitable for commercial use. I don't care how many environmental studies you do on this land, you cannot put 40-plus horses on 20 acres and expect a good or healthy outcome. The issue discussed over the past few years, complaints have never been resolved as they state they have been. The first complaint is the constant traffic of Patriot Way. There is no park, this is, there is no parking lot, just cars parked everywhere, no organization. Patriot Way is a gravel road and cannot take the abuse. The second complaint is the dust. This property is in a constant dust storm day and night. Thoroughly, it's a fly issue. Once again, no environmental report will address the endless nasty flies that 40 horses produce. They try to put in a few fly traps in trees and expect that to work. Guess what? It doesn't. Another major issue is the manure. As I stated, they pile it right at the entrance. What do you do with the poop? That you said, what do you do with the poop? You would think they would haul it off or haul it off periodically. They pile it right up at the entrance of the property. The planning department has been sent proof with pictures of all the concerns admitted by the planning department that they're aware of these health issues. For some reason, the manure problem isn't in the report or all the possibly hundreds of pictures sent to the county about outraged neighbors. We demand that you put a stop to this insanity and deny the CUP permit. Thank you.
This is a feisty group here. Tim, thank you for explaining that you guys got a plan forward for this and we're not really litigating anything in the past. I forgot to bring my notes. I did bring musical, my music though, because I thought this was an open mic karaoke. But let me just tell you, you see on the board there where it says .10 acres? That's my house underneath there. That's where I live. I've lived there several years. And I don't recall any manure being piled around my house because that is the entrance of Four Horse Ranch. So I'm a little confused about his statements, but I don't, I know, I know he has a right to voice his concerns and he probably has some legitimate concerns. Four Horse Ranch has been struggling with this for years. A lot of money, probably tens of thousands of dollars, have gone towards fighting for their viability out there. That's money that could have went to improvements that you want to see here. So I think they've been somewhat drug through the muck and that that has wasted some of their finances. I'm not one of the neighbors that are complaining about Four Horse. I'm the closest neighbor, but the benefits of what they do far outweigh some flies. And if there was a fly problem, I would know it. But they they do mitigation on flies. They do mitigation on the manure, the poop, and they try their hardest. If they weren't fighting so many battles from different fronts, they could probably be further along in this. But like Tim says, we'll pass that. This guy here very eloquently pointed out the problems with some of our planners and developer, you know, the planning department, code department. I did sit in a meeting with Gary Tofanelli. Is he supposed to be here? Okay, he's a supervisor, he's somebody else. Okay, I'm sorry. We had a meeting at North State Landscape several months ago. We had two people from the planning department, zoning department that were there, Gary, neighbors. They invited me there for this meeting. I don't know why because they probably didn't know where my stance was on this, which was to support a organically grown horse program that helped people like these girls here. And as you can see, these girls are, you know, I think they have been helped by Lynette in Four Horse tremendously. But in this meeting, I sat there and I got there a little late and I kind of sat there and listened. And I was kind of shocked at what I was hearing. You know, I didn't say anything for a while. But as they were talking, you know, some of the people that were frustrated with Four Horse Ranch were saying, this is taking too long to shut Four Horse Ranch down. You know, as he just said, you know, there's been complaints and nothing's happened. By the way, I've never heard Lynette, Jeremy, or anybody say, we don't care what this county says, we're just going to go against them. I've never heard him say that. In fact, Lynette used to be, she used to look like she's 21. With all this stress, now she looks 31. So it's, that's tough, guys. But in this meeting, this guy doesn't smile much at all, does he? I got coffee to get to. But in this meeting, the county, the people representing the county were saying things like this, listen, this takes time to shut an operation down. And he goes, this is how it works. And he says, we give them goals that they have to meet. He was talking about something up county, you know, uphill. He says, don't meet that goal. And as soon as they meet that goal, we'll give them another one. I'm sorry, too long?
Finish your sentence.
And he continued to say that this is the way, basically in my mind, this is the way we break people's backs, is we give them goals to the point where they can't meet that last goal and they give up. This was in this meeting. I record a lot of my meetings because I'm old and I forget what I say. But but I would do an affidavit on that, if you guys are interested. Finally, they asked me and I said, I said, I am surprised that we're, all we're talking about is finding ways to shut somebody down instead of help them. I said, we're talking about a horse ranch that services young women and young men. I said, if we can, if we can find out how to put dispensaries in this county that could that could benefit people, I'm no, no doubt that they benefit people, but if there's going to be any kind of nefarious activity, it would be something connected with that kind of a business. So here we are, we're fighting for, the reason I bring this up is because Tim said you guys got a plan. We got a plan forward. But if you got people in the county, planning department, that are trying to torpedo Four Horse Ranch, then they're going to find a way to break this. And I just wanted to make you guys aware. By the way, I do have a granddaughter that I adopted. I got her when she was two. Now she's 12. And if it wasn't for fours, they're going to have a lot more problems.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anybody, I'm sorry, anybody else who'd like to speak today? Come on. If there's anyone else who's kind of on the fence, you're going to get another chance after her, but then we're, we need to speak up because then we'll close this public portion of the hearing.
Hello, my name is Stacy Bosch. My husband Stuart Bosch and I are here today in opposition to propose a cut for Lynette and Jeremy Smith-Covey. First and foremost, I would like to address Madeline's work on this project, which has been downright offensive and insulting. Not only did you manage to conveniently leave out over 800 photos submitted submitted by various neighbors, including my husband and I, which clearly show repeated violations and issues which continuously happen on a day-to-day basis at Four Horse Ranch. Your report also shows blatant disregard for any neighbors when you had the audacity to reference fire and air quality, state going back to 2000 and four. The lessons have anything but stopped. I would like to note that Lynette is extremely quick to talk about false allegations, which is ironic, given that my husband and I had to hire a lawyer to serve them with a cease and desist letter due to her calling my husband a pedophile, and they have yet to take down the appalling letter submitted at last year's meeting, which also referenced Jason Freeman as a pedophile as well. At this point in time, the surrounding neighbors affected by the Smith-Coveys' continuous disregard are tired and would like to remind the county that unfortunately, us neighbors haven't been dealing with this for just the past two years, no, it's been more like the past five years. Every single one of us have done the neighborly thing. It wasn't until Randy was affected by the cesspool of flies, the dust, everything else, that he stood up and filed a complaint. It wasn't until Jason and his family couldn't get home in peace because of the traffic and other issues on the East and Mid Road that he too filed a complaint. And last but certainly, certainly not least, it wasn't until my husband and I lost our homeowner's insurance that we filed a complaint in an attempt to get it back from AAA. For the past five years, Lynette and Jeremy have continued to show the neighbors, as well as code enforcement, the planning board, and the board of supervisors, that they are not only unable, but unwilling to follow any ordinances, regulations, or parameters set forth because they are far too more important than those law-abiding citizens around them. My husband and I are downright sick and tired of this dog and pony show, and we are asking the county to please step up and put an end to this by by not rewarding the bad behavior and letting them disregard the ordinances and neighbors around them. By approving this cup, you would not only be telling the neighbors, but those in the community, that Calaveras County is not only okay with not following the rules, but furthermore, by rewarding those individuals. To stand in this room and claim it's okay to disregard our city officials and ordinances because everyone else in town is doing it is exactly what's wrong with the world today. Nobody in this room is disputing the work that the Smith-Coveys are doing or the impact that they've had, but rather talking to the point that at the end of the day, the piece of property is not zoned for what they are attempting to do. Simply put, they bought the wrong piece of land and the financial issues that they have incurred, that's the cost of doing business, folks. That's what happens when you try to run a business. It's going to cost money one way or the other.
Anybody else?
Howdy. My name is Lane McLennan. I am a informal foster child of the Smith-Coveys and the non-metaphorical bridge boy. I have lived with them off and on for the last five years or so, actually, probably closer to six at this point. And throughout that time, I have invested hundreds of hours into working on the property, which is a fraction of a percentage of what the rest of the family has. I can assure you, most of those on the picture are pretty accurate. I put in the fencepost myself and my brother and I are the ones who struck the line. In the five years since, and I know we're not supposed to be reiterating stuff that's in the past, but I feel like if the issue is still proceeding, then it's not in the past, it's continuing. In the five years since I've been there, hostilities between the neighbors have been unceasing and we have tried everything in our power to comply to their wishes within Every day on that property, things are improving. They always have been from the beginning. Initially, when we first got there, we had to figure out what exactly was hard-panned and what exactly wasn't. And that's how we decided where we were going to put the pastures and everything there. In the time since, I have left the property. I've moved out. I've started my own family. But much like the rest of the foster kids, you see a lot of them come in, you don't really see many of them leave because even when they're done, even when they've grown up and they've moved out, we end up coming back, every single one of us. I recently have actually moved back to Calaveras County. I'm currently residing in Angels Camp. And I fully intend to start devoting more of my time back towards the property and the house and the family that saved me from situations that I was not equipped to handle. This is not the first story. I'm just another example. But going forward, since that's what everybody's goal here is today, I think we need to vote to make sure that the business, that the nonprofit that is becoming stronger and stronger every day and a larger pillar of the community, needs to remain a pillar of the community. I know I've still got a bit of time left, but I really don't have much else to say. Everybody else has kind of said it, so I'm going to sacrifice my time. Thank you.
I live at 3828 Tunnel Lane, my wife and I. Bottom line is the Smith-Coveys didn't do their due diligence when they bought this piece of property. They were told it was commercial, it's rural residential. They bought the wrong property for what they are trying to do and now make their right. If this goes through, you guys are sending the wrong message that people can ask for forgiveness later than permission ahead, and this is going to cause some problems, which it already has.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Lynette, you can't speak again yet. We'll bring you back. You'll have another opportunity. Let's let the rest of the public finish up, so. Anybody else before I close this portion? Trying to get out of there.
Come on up.
Okay, we're all watching her. Okay. Anybody, is there anyone online, Lynette? No. Yes? Would you like to speak?
Hi, my name is Leanne Evinick, and I've been at Four Horse Ranch and I've never experienced smell or disarray as has been described or blocked the right ways. I've been up there many times. We live down in Wallace. And I think the point here is if they can meet the ordinances and the compliance that has been put upon them, I think those are the questions here. Can they comply? And if they can, I think they should go forward.
Thank you. Last chance, folks? No second thoughts? Okay, then we are going to close the public comment portion of this hearing. That doesn't mean that Commissioner couldn't ask to have you come back up if they wanted to ask questions, so. I think before we have Madeline and Bret respond, does anybody have any questions for any of the staff who are here today to answer questions?
Yeah, I would be interested in compliance staff and animal services.
That's what I figured. So environmental management and animal services, somebody here that come up and speak? Somebody here that can come up and speak?
Good morning, Commissioners. Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency and Animal Services Director. I have here with me Mike Vasquez, our awesome animal service manager.
Good morning.
So, anybody have questions besides Commissioner Lash? Let's let some other people.
He usually has points.
I always pause to see if anybody has questions.
We have an opportunity, we're not gonna...
I have no questions.
Okay, you guys, okay, go for it.
And I welcome other questions. But first I wanna say, animal services is a great aspect of our county government, struggling to do impossible goals. And we appreciate all the efforts that are put into it.
Thank you.
The staff report indicates that you, Mr. Vasquez, it called attention to this minimum standards of horse care in the state of California put out by UC Davis. And my understanding is that you have said, if all those standards are taken care of, are complied with, why then it's possible that 40 horses could be supported by this acreage? Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah. Our animal ordinance does not set aside any regulations pertaining to how many horses can be maintained on a property. And it is my understanding that the previous ordinance under Title 17 also did not have any limitations. So when posed the question, can 40 horses be housed on this property? We rely on studies such as this from UC Davis, which it states, for an 18-hand horse, you need a minimum of 15 by 15 stall, which is 225 square feet. So you could potentially have 40 horses on this property if managed properly. So some of the things that I would be looking at is, some of the horses, if they're geriatric, they're gonna need overhead protection. So I believe somebody mentioned, are there any barns, is there any shelter? So these animals have protection from the elements. So on the map, I can't really quite tell if there are any areas with overhead protection, but that's something that they could potentially build as well, so. But again, these are...
You yourself have never been on the property.
I have not been on the property myself, correct.
And so you have no opinion as to whether, under the current circumstances, that these standards are met on the property?
Correct.
And if we put in a condition, as the owner said she would have no objection to, condition to this conditional use permit, that these standards shall be complied with and which would result in more, in an environmentally sound operation, who would enforce such a condition? Would it be your department, or code compliance, or who?
Are you specifically speaking to either a manure management plan and/or the installation of paddocks, structures, to mitigate anything that might be misconstrued? Or what is it, the specific...
Yeah, well, what I'm saying is that if we put in a condition that these minimum standards be met, that, who would enforce that condition? I mean, that would entail...
Can I help here? Can I help here with the enforcement? Just under county code, this would be a conditional use permit. So if an allegation that a condition of a conditional use permit is violated because those standards are not required elsewhere in the county, that's just, that would be a condition. It would be planning and code compliance looking at it. They might ask for the assistance of animal services in interpreting the standards.
That is correct, that's what I assumed as well.
I just wanted to make sure there was a confusion about...
Yeah.
As usual, it would be a complaint-driven system.
Right, response.
I actually have a question that's related to this. I just wanna slide it in right here.
Sure.
I read this document, and it seems that it is relying basically on the condition of the animals. That's really the bottom line here, are the animals in good condition. And then this tells you a lot of things that might contribute to keeping them in good condition.
Correct.
It is not a prescription of exactly what needs to be provided. Is that a correct interpretation?
Correct, yeah. Our Title VI does not have many provisions with livestock. Most of it is domestic animals. So, you know, we can't really enforce something that doesn't exist. So in lieu of that, we use the guidance documents from the experts. So if we, you know, if we look at, if we get a complaint about a horse that's skinny, let's say, we ask the members of the public to provide a picture so that is a credible complaint. Make sure it's, you know, signed affidavit, and we'll go ahead and investigate. We need to score that animal and see if it's something that's actionable or not, so. But we don't have in our ordinance anything about waste management or, most importantly, I think some of the issues that I've been hearing is, I think that would be mitigated with having setbacks. So if it's too close to a neighborly property where manure is being piled up or stored, I think that those could be mitigated that way, so. But like Mr. Robby here mentioned, a horse, based on this study, a horse defecates on average 54 pounds of waste. And so having 40 horses is 2160 pounds. So that is one ton of waste a day. So that's where the waste management plan comes into play, of course. But yeah, I mean, under the new revised Title 17 ordinance, that they only allow one horse per acre, which I think is more reasonable, in my opinion, of course.
And back on the minimum standards, it does have an appendix for the valuation checklist that goes aspect by aspect. Does it, such as, is minimum shelter provided for the given circumstances as described in pages 28 and 29, et cetera? Now, on page, actually, starts on page 27, cites the penal code that horses must be provided with necessary shelter or protection from the weather. And on recommended standards under here, it says necessary shelter may differ depending on the severity of the weather and the condition of the horse. For instance, a group of young horses can huddle together in a grove of trees and brave the elements. A one solitary elderly horse may not fare well in the same circumstances. And on page 28, which was cited in the appendix, it says shelter in the form of a structure should be available for horses in cases of prolonged extreme weather conditions, including excessive rainfall, such as we had last night. My question is, if you can provide me with this, is if all these minimum standards were to be met, how many horses, and given what we've seen about the property, which shows these paddocks taking up less than two of the 20 acres, and the paddocks from this picture, I see no shelters on them, so it'd be open to dust and the dust production in the summer. How many horses, if all these standards are met, under those conditions, do you think this could reasonably support?
Sure. That's difficult to answer only because the law doesn't require a overhead protection, a shelter, or a barn per horse.
I understand.
So horses can be let out on pasture, period. That's where I was mentioning earlier. A geriatric horse, however, should, not shall, but should have proper shelter. So that's where the, there's a legal requirement, which is just provide with necessary shelter, which is subjective, necessary is subjective. But for like, for example, a geriatric horse, 20-plus years, that horse should be kept, especially like in the weather that we just experienced last night. It should have protection from the elements, absolutely. Or the young animals. So if there's any horses that are, that have given birth on the property, those should also be protected from the elements. So a sick or disabled animal as well, so.
But what I'm trying to get at is that you have indicated that a 20-acre property could provide adequate facilities for 40 horses. Now that we see what this property does have, and we know the standards that are set within this document, if those standards are complied with on this property, what's your estimation on the number of horses that could be maintained on that property in compliance with all these standards?
So, again, I go back to the minimum space standards. 225 square feet per horse to be able to lie down, stand up, and then they have to have proper exercise areas, which it looks like they have paddocks for exercise. So I don't wanna say a number, but that's what was proposed in the routing of that CUP, 40 horses, so.
Wait, wait, wait. Come back to the 40 horses. The 40 horses are, if everything is complied with here, if the property can...
I think the problem is that it's all a judgment call as to what, on any particular property, at any particular moment. And he's not going to be able to give us an exact number that is...
I'm not saying an exact number, I'm just, it's a judgment call.
Let's just say that I agree with the new title, that is one horse per acre. And that has to do a lot with how much that property can provide sustenance to a horse. Because of course, we rely on those nice green pastures when it's seasonal for nutrition. But then when it's all, you know, dry, like that picture there, they have to bring in hay. So it would be good to have, you know, excess hay on the property. So a hay barn to protect it from the elements as well. So it doesn't, you know, go moldy. So those are the things that I would be looking at, so.
So you would have to have the, at least know the ages of the horses, or how many of the horses are...
Yes.
In order to make kind of a determination, is that right?
Correct, yeah. So typically, like, for example, in our ordinance for, let's say for dogs, if we're issuing a kennel license, we have all those dogs registered. And we check rabies vaccines, and we cross-reference, and we know exactly how many animals there are. So I think that, you know, I don't know if that's one of the requirements, but an annual inspection of the facility would probably be recommended. But again, it's not under our Title VI, so.
And we would respond, you know, to any complaint that would be submitted by our public accordingly. And it sounds like, you know, this is subjective and it's conditional, you know, dependent on that. And our, of course, our best interest is always in those that can protect themselves. So it's gonna be the best interest of the animals and their care and husbandry.
And I ought to point out that the care of the horses is also tied to the environmental impact of the operation on the community. And that's why I realize I'm putting, I've put you on the spot. We are on that spot.
Yeah.
We're in the process of trying to determine, is it reasonable for this property to support 40 horses? I understand you're to say that you're in agreement, you have no disagreement with the current zoning code that would normally limit, or that would limit RR zone properties to one horse per acre. So here it would be 20 horses.
Yeah.
That's as far as we're gonna get today, right?
Correct. I mean, factors that contribute to is how many workers are there, whether they're paid or volunteers. I mean, with, you know, 55 pounds of waste per horse, that's a lot of, you know, mucking these areas. So I would imagine you would need quite a few employees to be taking care of that on a daily basis, so.
And all that could be inclusive in the manure management plan as well. That determination can be made in that document.
Which brings me to that, the current status of that document, the waste management document.
I have not seen that document myself. I'm looking forward to reviewing that document as soon as it's presented. We'll review it accordingly. Make sure that it meets all the definitions of a good manure management plan, which includes the storage, the handling, management, transportation, making sure the manure is on a hard surface and that it's protected, and that it's away from surface waters, you know, such as streams, anything that could be considered off-site for any stormwater considerations, and erosion controls are in place.
And then, once that is in place, then enforcement of that would come under code compliance, or...
Again, we would respond to a complaint-driven response, you know, by the public.
And when you say, when you say "we"...
Yes, that means Environmental Management Agency inspectors.
Thank you.
Me included, I still go out in the field.
So would you guys be in a position to do a regularly scheduled annual, or biannual, or whatever?
We would certainly respond to that if it is conditioned, certainly.
Yeah, that could be included as a condition. You guys would be in a position to be able to handle that.
Yes.
Absolutely, unannounced visits.
You bet.
Anybody have any further questions for these folks?
Just real quickly, the unannounced visits or the making such inspections, would that be required to be part of the CUP conditions, or not?
Yeah, I mean, the commission has discretion in a conditional use permit hearing to determine what additional conditions beyond those required by law or by SEQA might be necessary to reduce nuisance or other environmental conditions on the property. So you could condition, you could condition the contents of a manure management plan beyond what was possibly minimum for SEQA. You could condition it on number of horses. You could condition it on annual inspections. You are allowed to do whatever you think is reasonable and necessary to meet the findings that you have to make in order to approve a conditional use permit.
But they are otherwise routine then?
It's not a routine.
They would not do it if we did not create that condition.
How frequently does that take place? How frequently do they include such...
Whatever we decide.
Annual inspections is not, it's not an uncommon type of condition to be added to a CUP, but you have wide discretion to craft the conditions in a way that you need to in order to make the findings.
Thanks.
And it could be part of the manure control plan that you'll be reviewing. Could you put any conditions in there that you think would be...
Yes, what we'll do is we'll review the entire document to ensure that all the requirements are met and anything can be set forth by that document.
I have to just check in...
For the plan, but not for the inspection.
Yeah, I mean...
Yeah, inspections, inspections are...
We have a little, I mean, anything that is not required by county code that we are imposing has to really be a decision by the Planning Commission. It's because it's a public hearing to get to that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything additional?
Anybody else? No?
Thank you.
Desapew, we won't ask you back.
Thank you.
Mr. Oliver.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Oh. Why is everybody?
I don't have anything prepared, I can answer questions.
Everybody just go before me, so.
Yeah. Any, anybody else?
Go for it.
Does it make your job easier that we have specific conditions set for the granting of the, of the conditional use permit, rather than having you?
Yeah, I can answer that.
Just a clarification before we move on. You're here as the code compliance office, right? Not as the building department, right, at this moment?
Whatever you ask me to be, I'm not going to answer questions.
What Tim is looking at is code compliance issues.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, and, and my question was getting so convoluted, I forgot. What, does it help you in your code compliance to have very clear conditions on any conditional use permit, particularly if there's been a history of, of conflict between the neighbors and the applicant?
I mean, that kind of depends. Overall, I would say it does not, because our process is the same regardless of, of the code. So if we're investigating a no permit violation, there's no permit, and that's easy. If there is a permit and there are conditions, we follow the conditions. If there's a violation of the conditions, that's easy. Our case was essentially a short list, primarily the lack of a permit. If the permit is obtained and they're adhering to the permit, there are no violations. So regardless, it will be the same enforcement process.
Is, in that enforcement process, we have, if we impose a number of specific conditions, I, I understand we could ask for, or require as one of those, or provide in one of those conditions, that there be regular annual or unannounced visits to the property to seek, to determine that there is compliance. Is that your understanding, that, that, I mean, would you be able to live with that?
My understanding is your, your commission does have the ability to ask for that. I would say that I would caution against that for any individual, case-by-case basis, because, one, we, that would, you'd have to establish who's responsible for making contact annually, you'd have to also establish a fee for that, because we do not have a fee for that. We also have to make sure we have staffing available. And right now, I've got two code compliance officers. But, and what I would say is that code compliance would not be involved, because it would be an issued permit, and they would be in compliance. Code compliance does not get involved. So it would have to be which department would enforce, how would they enforce, who's responsible for acquiring it, and then what is the fee for that? So that, that becomes burdensome for everyone involved, including the applicant.
So to be clear, then you would not recommend any additional requirements?
That's the short answer.
I think he's not saying he wouldn't recommend the conditions. He's saying that the conditions should be crafted, and we would know which department would be responsible for, if we were going to require regular. Code compliance responds to complaints.
Correct.
Those haven't looked.
Correct.
They're not the right department to, to task with an annual inspection necessarily.
Right.
Depending on what it is.
Yeah, if there's a permit and there's no complaints, then we're not involved.
Right.
Well, that's, that's clear. Thank you.
Anybody else? You could sit down for the moment.
Thank you.
Okay, I think this is, should we take a quick break? How about a 15-minute break? Is that enough for everybody? Julie's good, okay? Are you guys, okay, 15 minutes? Hi, everybody. We're all back, or most of us.
Hello.
Could we get everybody to take a seat, please? Do we want to hear? I think it's been five years since the last time I tapped on that baby. Is there anybody out in the hall?
Once she fires it up.
Let's let Lynette get back in. Okay. Is that most everybody? So the next piece right here is going to be an opportunity for the planning staff to answer questions, respond to comments. Both Madeline and Brett will be handling some of that, so take it away, guys.
I wanted to maybe start with some of the public comments, and addressing some of the public comments. There are quite a few comments in regards to the code complaints and complaining and referencing the planning department. I just want to reiterate that the planning department certainly encouraged everybody to provide code complaint, complaints to our code department and not the planning department. And there were quite a few complaints that went to code enforcement, and I believe many, many pictures and things like that. And so the planning department is not involved in that, and we certainly route people to the correct department whenever we get an inquiry. But we're not, you know, the, we're not code enforcement. And there was, I think, a little bit of, you know, gray area there where we're processing this conditional use permit. And so people were using that opportunity to continue code complaints. And so I just wanted to assure the commission, whenever we got those types of code complaints, that we forwarded them on to code enforcement, and that is the correct entity for that. There was also a very, which turns out, a very relevant comment on outdoor amplified music or outdoor noise. That was a statement in the SEQA document, in the environmental analysis. And it said that outdoor amplified music was not being proposed as part of this project, and so wasn't going to be evaluated per SEQA, yet it would be made a condition of approval that outdoor amplified music was not allowed. That was, that was amiss on our part, that wasn't made a condition of approval. It is now a condition of approval that no outdoor amplified music is allowed. So that was from the SEQA document. If that was a proposal by the applicant, we would have needed to have analyzed that and probably noise study and all things in regards to that. So I wanted to make that correction, that, that's now a condition of approval.
Could I ask a question about that? So does that mean they can't have any amplified music or entertainment at their?
As part of the conditional use permit activities. Yeah, so they could have, you know, it would just have to be in regards to the birthday parties that they're having three a year, and/or as part of the writing lessons. So it would have to be in regards to their conditional use permit activities. If they had like a private, a private party or something like that, that wasn't in the scope of this conditional use permit, then county code would apply, and the noise ordinance would apply.
The noise ordinance would apply.
Yes.
That's, thank you.
Another one, there was a reference to a meeting that, that occurred recently, where it was intimated that maybe planning staff was making comments against the project and against the application. Planning staff was at no such meeting and does not, does not know about any such meeting whatsoever. So I just wanted to clarify that, that, and certainly, we would never be making comments for or against a project, and certainly wouldn't be, you know, conveying that to any members of the public whatsoever. So it's our job to be unbiased, and it's our job to process the application. I'll, I'll finish with, there was certainly a derogatory comment made towards county staff in the public comments. I just wanted to say that I feel that staff, especially Madeline here, has done a fantastic job trying to navigate this very, let's say, charged situation. And she's kind of been forced to wear many hats and try to navigate this entire process while being fair and unbiased. And I just wanted to say that certainly, as your new planning director, I will be ensuring that staff is treated in a certain way, and I'll certainly be stepping in if I feel that staff is not being treated in a professional way or in a, in a kind ways. Because we certainly need to be cognizant of ensuring that there's a good work environment. So I just wanted to state that I feel that staff has done a fantastic job. And I know that whether people are for or against the project, they, they wanted instant solutions either way, and this was a, this is a process. So, you know, I understand why people are frustrated, but I just wanted to say that I feel that staff has done a fantastic job, and has really gone, gone above and beyond in all respects, so. Those are the only comments I had on the public comments. I don't know, Madeline, have you had anything else?
Are there questions?
Just thank you for being protective of your staff.
Any questions?
I'll, I'll have further questions when we get to the reservation.
Okay, so Lynette or Jeremy, would one of you like to come up and kind of respond to any comments? Yeah, 10 minutes.
Okay, first, I would like to address the meeting at North State Landscape Company, invited by Randy Craig, who had Jason Freeman in attendance, as well as invited Perry Willard. At that meeting was Gabriel Elliott, Gary Tofanelli, and, and Doug Oliver, and Cody Anderson. So yes, there was a meeting. It did state things, and Perry is willing to sign an affidavit according to those things, if necessary. When doing conditions on the permit, because of that meeting, I believe it may open the county to litigation, and I would highly advise against that, like, be careful, please. I don't want to have to go there. I'm trying to be compliant, I'm trying to work together with the county, I'm trying to do everything that's being requested of me, to the tune of tens of thousands of dollars. I have put gravel on the road that I have not charged my neighbors for. Jason Freeman decided to go ahead and tractor his road yesterday. He only tractored the small portion that leads to him that does not have any other traffic. The neighbors don't take care of the property, we do. And we do a fine job of it, despite what they say. Madeline did a wonderful job. I really appreciate her hard work, and Brett, I really appreciate your defense of her. She has had to be distant from me for proprietary reasons. I tend to be a very friendly person. And she had to stay very, for me. And I appreciate that, even knowing that it was, because she's doing this, I, she made it very clear, I am an applicant, I'm not a client, I am not here, I, she's not on my side, or their side, or anybody else's side, she's on the side of the county, and she's working together with the code. We, this whole thing started because of code misunderstandings. We are 100% on board with being compliant to the code. When referencing the number of horses, when we purchased this property, there was nothing in the code, even with a conditional use permit, that limited our number of horses, only our care of keeping of them. We have been investigated multiple times. Rebecca and Ian of Animal Control have been out there. Matthew Poole with Environmental Services has been out there, Madeline has been out there. Multiple people have been out on the property and seen it, and seen it firsthand. It is not, I'm just gonna, they've seen it and, and declared it wonderful, actually. 20 acres are used for manure piles, for hay storage, for housing. The housing requirement is 225 acres, I'm sorry, square feet per horse. That would house a lot more than what we actually have on the property, or choose to have. We, we have friends with a barn that house our geriatric horses, or horses that have recently folded or about to fold, different things. We move horses to other places as needed. And then we bring them back when, when we judge it's proper or safe. I'm, I'm drawing a blank. We have removable panels that are able to be moved around, as witnessed by Cody and others. And even these neighbors that like to complain, they can see clearly that we move things around, we do things. We like to give the horses as much green grass as possible, so we don't have to weed, eat, and mow as much. Although we do take care of our property. That's, I think I've addressed everything without going and rehashing and beating the horse again.
Thank you.
Is there anything else you have questions about?
One clarification with, we have the paddocks and then the rest of the property. How much time do the horses spend on the rest of the property? And have they ever put out to pasture? I guess you can have a hard time with the road.
They, they do cross the road when.
Put on pasture, not put out.
Right, right. They, they spend a lot of time on pasture. It's hard to qualify or quantify the exact amount of time. They spend a lot of time on pasture.
Is there fenced areas, though?
Yes, there are fenced areas, more than fenced areas, yes. Yes.
And how large are those areas?
Fairly.
Roughly, I mean, what percentage of the property can they graze on, is what I would like to know.
It, it, it's irrelevant, because we put them out on 20 acres, 30 acres, at other people's properties, as well as our property. So the amount of property that we have, it extends a lot bigger than 20 acres, because when you add 20 acres here, 10 acres there, 5 acres there, plus our 20, it becomes quite a bit. And those acreages are fully fenced with no easement road through them. We suffer an easement road through us. And because of that easement road, we keep horses off the road. Our paddocks are set back from the road, so that there's no interference, you can clearly see traffic. We try to be very careful. If everybody drove carefully and, and respectfully, there wouldn't be any issues.
Are there fences along the road?
There are. The, there's panels mainly along the road in order to prevent animals from ending up on the road.
What do you mean by panels?
Panels, removable panel fences, so, so like you, yeah, like big metal. Yeah, it's not hot wire and, and tape. It used to be.
Is the perimeter of the property completely fenced?
No.
It's not.
The perimeter is not completely fenced. As was yours recently.
Okay, okay.
Oh, not your dog, Jason's dog.
That's, we're not doing that.
Yeah.
So this is her opportunity to speak and answer questions from the commission. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else for Lynette right now?
Seems like the, the road is a big issue. Have you ever considered, and this goes to the neighbors behind you, it looks like you could do a road behind, to the east of the pens, and then hit the southern boundary and get, get back on Patriot Road? Then you would, you could do what you wanted to do on the road. The neighbors wouldn't have to go through your operation. Have you guys ever?
I have been advised that I could require that. The easement is already set for the, for, next to Perry's property. I didn't want to do that to Perry. I also did not want to do that, because it would require extensive financial cost to Vern Hall, Vern Hall. And although he did have someone come and talk against me, we do care about Vern, so we don't want to do that. Jason Freeman's place is for sale, and we are hoping for a more positive neighbor situation when he sells, so.
If I could, Commissioner Robey, just to add, it's a recorded map. It's a recorded map, and it would need, it would require a modification to the map itself.
It's a recorded easement?
It's a recorded easement and a recorded map.
Which would also be expensive on my part and the neighbors' parts, so.
So it's a deed to easement, and the deed is with landowners behind them?
Yes.
So you're infringing on their deed to easement?
No.
Yes.
But she owns it.
No, because we are not actually on the easement. We own the land the easement is on, the deed to easement allows them to go through. We could revoke the deed to easement if we chose to go that route.
Hmm, probably not. You probably could not revoke your easement, but, but that's a.
Irrelevant, yeah.
That we are not really prepared to delve into. But they have, it's a private road and public utility easement, as my understanding is 25 feet wide. If they were to move it, they might be required to make it a wider easement. There are, there definitely would be costs.
Yeah, there would be costs.
So is there a road maintenance agreement among all of you who make use of that road?
No, we take care of the road. We do, we put on gravel regularly, we tractor it regularly. No, we take care of the road. We do, we put on gravel regularly. We tractor it regularly. We take care of it.
Anything else?
I mean, just to reiterate, it is deeded. There is a deeded with a parcel number on that road.
No, I think you're, it's an easement. It's not a separate parcel through the middle.
When I say deedee easement, I mean exactly that. It's not, so it's not a deedee easement.
It's described on the deed as an easement, not, it didn't create a separate parcel number. I think that's what you're asking, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
If it was deeded, that'd be a whole different story.
Yeah.
So, I think now we're all clear.
So we don't build on the road. We try to stay clear of the road. We try to keep it very visible. We have everything set back off the road. We've been extremely respectful of our neighbors behind us for that.
Yeah, the difference between deedee and prescribed is huge. You're right.
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead and take a seat, and we'll call you back up if we need to. Do you guys want to proceed? Does anybody want to start with some thoughts?
The thought guy?
No, we're everybody. The thought guy's hanging on for a bit.
Maybe the thought guy.
Commissioner Lozano?
No, I'm good.
Well, so, we're moving toward a resolution here, so.
Once Tim's done with his list, because he usually covers a lot of what we all think, and then some, and then I think for me, I'm gonna-
It might be helpful if everybody sort of said, I am looking for this kind of a solution, but it, you know, I don't have all the details worked out. At least we'd know if we're all kind of headed in the same direction here. And then we can get help from staff on how to craft that.
I'm inclined to go forward with this. I recall the last time they were here before this group, before this committee, they were, they laid out, the county laid out to clear specific expectations, and they've met those expectations. And they've done so in good faith, and I think they're doing a good work in the community. And I fully support what they're, what they're doing. And I would be in support of a resolution as such.
Yeah, there's no doubt that they're doing great work with the foster kids and everything else. I think it jumped out at me is 40 horses is a lot. And I think if that number was reduced, it would also just reduce everything else about it to hopefully keep the neighbors behind them a little bit less, you know, annoyed. So I'm thinking more like 30 horses.
Or another thought is, if somehow they could fence the perimeter, that's not a possibility? Yeah.
I had the impression that they were working toward that, but it is not usable year-round just because of the conditions. So the horses can't be on it year-round. But I'm sure that they would like to have a fence. We could, you can ask them to come up and-
Well, yeah, she said, no.
The neighbor that spoke up and said my dog was in their yard, there is a fence. There is a fence. If Madeline could put up our picture again. There is a fence across the western side of the property, the entire property. Also, there's a partial fence across back where it says 0.3 acres. There's a, there's a partial fence, like on Jason's side. He's actually 30 feet into our side. We have not done litigation to make him move, and we honestly don't, we just want peace. We are even willing to give up space for peace. There is no fence to the, to that side, east, thank you, directionally challenged, and even in a paper bag. So to the east, there is no fence. But that side doesn't have neighbors that are complaining. The road goes directly all the way up to the, you see the gray that goes back to Jason's property, but the black that goes up to the top corner, that goes uphill to Vern Hall's property. Fencing the entire perimeter wouldn't help. We have movable panels that we can put in, where we can let them graze in the back area. We can let them graze on the downhills. We can put them around the trees. We could do all kinds of things that direction as the ground is usable, according to weeds. Like you don't want horses eating fox tails. You don't want horses out on land that is going to cause them founder on their feet. So there are things that we want to avoid, even in dry, good weather. We do use other people's properties for larger turnout areas, time off, things like that. When there's geriatric horses spend time in other places, our birthing horses, we have shelter, AKA blankets. We have shelters. We have trees. We have all kinds of things. We have our place very well thought out and set up, according to its usability.
So then based on that, you wouldn't be opposed to limiting it to 30 horses?
I would be opposed. I am opposed to anything that violates our personal rights. I purchased this property when there was zero, zero limitation. Two per acre, this land can more than support two per acre. If you want to limit me, you are limiting my personal rights. I have a lot of foster kids behind me that have needs. I have my business that I would like to be able to supply, and that has needs. We do, if you want to limit the horses to a certain number, that's fine, as long as it's in there that says that the, anything under two, which is considered a foal, does not count. Anything pregnant does not count. The stallion does not count, which is per the code as it exists right now. So if you limit me in that number, then you're actually going to increase my number.
I'm just a little confused about where in the zoning code the rules about the foals.
I'll find it for you. It's in 17. There's, there's, there are, I've seen it. It's very specific to breeding operations. And I am an actual agricultural operation because I do my breeding program.
I'm just, my only concern is whether it's in Title VI for the animals versus in Title 17 for zoning, because in this-
You know, it might be Title VI.
So, and the thing is-
But it might be 17. I don't remember.
So in this hearing, we're only looking at Title 17, and so with a conditional use permit, even if there's a default, I just want to clarify how the law works here. If there's a default minimum or maximum under Title VI, at this hearing, the commission has the authority to impose stricter conditions to the extent necessary to make their findings. I just, that's, I'm just letting-
I would, I would advise, I really would prefer to not have to deal with further neighbor complaints, constant problems, et cetera. More impositions, I can afford what I've got. I'm only asking for what I've got.
Commissioner Parkers, are you done with your comments?
For now. Yeah, I have made nothing further for her. You can sit down if you'd like. My thoughts are that the, the actual business activities, the activities other than just being a homeowner with horses, the activities that are being described for this permit, the bringing at-risk youth, youths onto the property, basically socializing people through the use of animal relationships, I think is, is a highly admirable goal. And I'm convinced that you are very committed to that. The problem I see with this is the number of horses. We have, I mean, the onsite services to at-risk youth would, you could probably provide those services with 10 horses. And now, the current zoning code that doesn't apply here would normally limit the property to 20 horses. I think it would be totally unreasonable for us to do anything under 20 horses. So it seems to me we're somewhere between 20 and 40 horses. For our purposes, I think a horse means a horse. I mean, an equine animal, not the foals, the, you know, all the other. So it seems to me that the additional horses are really there in order to support the business that's being carried on outside the property, the guided rides and that sort of thing. I get into problems with those, because we get back to that this is rural residential. And permitting activities on the property that supports outside business activity is a hard, hard line to draw. I mean, if an owner had a steel plant next door that was properly zoned as a steel plant, would we permit storage of equipment, et cetera, on the RR property to support the business that's out there? I mean, that's a rough analogy. But that's where I have my problem, and I think the, if, and I'm not saying that this is what we should do, if we were to restrict this to the number of horses that are required for your onsite services to offsite people, I don't think there would be any problems with the neighbors.
If you could wait one moment.
If you can answer my question, solve my problem, that's great. Anyhow, I, that's where, for our further discussion, for purposes of our further discussion, that's where my, my concern lies, is that we have an RR property, and we have 40 horses on it with all the intended environmental effects. It's, no matter how well they can be mitigated, you're still going to have an effect of having that much manure being generated each day on this property, on this RR rural residential property. And dust from the number of horses.
Commissioner Lozano, specifically, what is your question? I think you were asking Lynette, could she accept a limitation less than the 40?
No, I think she's already answered that.
I actually am asking you a question. Are you saying that Madeline's work was not adequate? Because she's, she came up with the number of 40, and she did all of this work for the SEQA saying what the air, the impact was. She did the inspection on the property.
I think I have to interject. The project description is your project description for your application that you approved for 40 horses. So it's not our, our made-up project description.
Right, no, I understand that.
It's not, we didn't come up with 40 horses. It was something that either you came up with or agreed to. So it's, it's actually the opposite of what you said.
It was the number that I asked for based on, no, it's actually not the opposite. Her and I discussed the project. We discussed what was needed. She did the SEQA report and other environmental impact, based on what's there.
Based on your project description.
If everybody could just take, take a pause right here, because we're kind of talking over each other. One of the things that is part of our job description today is not just to come up with conditions that address the SEQA issues, but also what could address nuisance issues, or situations that could result in problems with your neighbors, or reduce their ability to enjoy the use of their property. So, just because SEQA is satisfied, doesn't satisfy the entire project.
And another thing, we want to mitigate having to go through this again, or having you lose your permit, because your neighbors keep complaining. So we want to find a happy medium. It's not going to be perfect for you. It's not going to be perfect for them. It's going to be somewhere in the middle.
Which I would like to point out, that there's, there's no happy medium where they're concerned, except our removal, which is a stated event. Like that happened in a meeting. They stated that.
So, we weren't at that meeting. And let's just take a look at where we're at today. I think you've already heard from the commission that there is a lot of support for all the good work you do in the community with kids, with the horses. I don't think anyone questions your desire to do something good for your community, and to take good care of your horses. So, we're just trying to find how we can craft something that will work for you, and allow you to continue to do what you really want to do-
Yes.
-without imposing on the neighbors unreasonably. And you keep saying, all you want is what you have a right to, but you don't have a right to have a business on that property. You have a right, with no limitation on the number of horses, to have your private facility there, for you and your family. And I think if you can wrap your head around that, you will help us craft a solution for you.
Because we are trying.
We want to.
Yes, I appreciate that.
So, come on up, sir.
Poor Troy.
Distracted me back there in the corner. Back there. This is not a one-person show. This is not a one-business, one-person opportunity. We are building a 501(c)(3). We have a board. This isn't one person making all the decisions. In fact, when it comes to building on property, she doesn't make those decisions. I do. I've built every fence. I have built every-
Is he your son?
Yes. I have, everything that is on that property, I have been a part of, I've been a part of building. I have done. I've done almost, I'd say 90%, aside from what Dad has, my Dad has done, I've done myself. All of the supplies, all the materials, it's me. So when we're addressing what's being built, she can't address that properly, because her ideas are great.
I can't. I can't.
I have, I have, I put, I put in the work. So when you're saying, hey, build a property, a fence around the property, that's my idea. I had planned on doing that in the first place. I had been stopped with resource allocation. I haven't been able to put money towards it, but I-
So it is doable.
I absolutely have every intention of putting a fence around the property. Can I do that today? And if you put that in the, in the requirements, would it stop us from being able to move forward today? If it had to be done within a month, I couldn't afford it. Could I put the money towards it over the course of, if we had an action plan for a set number of, amount of time? Possibly. If we're talking about, hey, what is it required to make this property possible to hold on to this many horses? If you, if you gave us an action plan to move forward, I would be absolutely happy to comply with those, with that desire to provide for the horses. Because again, as I stated before, it's my intention to address all further complaints by making the property something that nobody would ever complain about.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead and sit down.
Okay, absolutely.
We're going to give you guys an opportunity to talk together before anybody has to agree to anything.
Yes.
So whatever we suggest or come up with, you will have a chance to respond to.
Absolutely. I just need to make sure that all of the, she's, a lot of pressure on her, and she's starting to fumble answers, because it's so, it's, we're working on, we're working on this together as a group, and it's hard to put a lot of pressure all at once, so.
Thank you.
I haven't noticed any fumbling myself.
Thank you.
We just don't want to get combative, if that's all.
Yeah, no, I agree. And I do tend to get a little combative, because I'm very passionate. So, thank you.
Okay. Do you have comments? Do you want to finish your comments?
No, those were my comments. That's, that's my problem. And I don't have a solution. And I hope, I think you just, you hit the solution, reduce the amount of horses.
I wonder if it's possible to reduce the number of horses until they get perimeter. I mean, can we put levels? I don't know if we can do that, where they have to hit milestones? Is that something we can do, or?
So, let me talk, because I, I think all of us are struggling with the same thing here, which is, we want to allow this to go forward. I, so, as somebody who hears from people who are visiting the county and looking for things to do, horseback rides, trail rides are, are very popular. So you are providing something that people want. More importantly, you're providing a service to your community. So, but I do, I struggle with the fact that RR property is intended to be primarily residential in nature. in nature. And you are allowed to have personal scale farming, not personal scale agriculture, personal scale farming. And neither farming nor our definition of agriculture includes equine developments. So stables, horses. That, I'm not saying you can't have that. I'm saying that that requires a conditional use permit.
Which is why.
And so that's why we're here today, right? So we all agree on all of that. So I'm just struggling to find a balance that will, that no one will be happy with, but that will be workable for everyone. I also am sympathetic to the idea that if there was a way for us to craft it, and Julie's going to give me the evil eye here in a minute to say, no, you can't do that, like for us to say, hey, in two years, let's say we limit it to whatever number we all decide is reasonable, could you come back in two years and, and having done more development and more infrastructure and not having any problems with your neighbors, could we then say, yes, we might be able to raise the number of horses that you could have on your property?
I would request that you remove the not having any problems with neighbors.
We're not expecting.
You can have it be a positive, like more number versus lower because I actually, that's another thing is it's five neighbors for and five neighbors against is actually incorrect. It's six. But I didn't catch that until last night, so. I have six for us. There's another neighbor that wasn't on the plot map that had voiced positive.
What do you think, Julie?
I think they can, at any time, anybody who has a conditional use permit can apply for a modification of it. So there is nothing, regardless of how well you do or don't do or what happens. You can always come back and apply. There is an application fee for that. The staff would have to do some inspections and take a look, but you can apply for a modified CUP at any point in the future.
Okay.
That makes.
My thoughts are if the whole property is fenced, you can certainly house more than 40 horses on that based on the square footage. I'm just going by square footage.
Yeah, but that, that's a misinterpretation of what that document said. It said a stall in a barn of 225 square feet for an 18-hand horse up to 2,000 pounds. That is the minimum stall size, which also requires turnout area, paddocks, exercise space. So that number is useless for a calculation for our purposes today because that's not their situation. But regardless, on 20 acres, clearly you could house more horses if everything else was ideal, right? And you didn't have neighbors that were being impacted by the situation. So my gut tells me somewhere between 25 and 30 might be a place we could land on. I'm not saying, you know, that I can't be influenced one way or another, but I just want to hear what everybody else is thinking now.
Let me ask a question. The issue with 40 horses is the manure and the flies and?
Dust.
Dust and.
I have another issue with.
The business. More horses mean more business, I would assume.
Right, everything. It just, it's just more intensity possible. Also, you know, when you're managing manure, you have water quality issues. I think actually environmental management spoke to this of all the numbers of things that they will have to look at. It's just a harder project. The more you have, it's a lot to move. And I think you do want to move it and take care of it and you don't want your animals standing around in the muck.
Speaking to that, I think, I think it's very important that we have a resolution that does cover the issues and provides references within the resolution to what we're talking about. And that we'll get to that when we get around to the actual revolution, resolution.
Revelation?
Revelation. That's what we need, is the revelation. But I do think that as far as the mitigation of manure management provision, I think that we've heard from the environmental, environmental services department? Management. I feel confident that we can leave it to environmental management to fine tune that, I mean, only approve a plan that makes sense.
Right, I don't think it was intended to come back to us.
No, it isn't intended to come back, but we don't need to get into details as to what that plan must provide. That's what I, so we have, we have dual requirements and from my point of view that we need to have a very clear resolution, but we don't need to deal with every specific thing within the manure management provision and let the county experts on that sort of thing do their job. So.
Should, would we need them to make inspections of manure management or wait till a complaint happens?
Well, we, that's something we can do is require an annual, so.
And manure is actually fertilizer, also known as fertilizer.
And it's my green belt.
And I'm telling you, it's a desirable thing people want. So I think getting rid of manure is relatively easy. A post online could help you in that area.
You have to deliver though because they can't.
We do, yes. We actually, the manure pile up front was referring to a pile that had been.
Staged.
It had been staged and then it was quickly removed. There is, like Perry said, there is no manure pile up front. There is no, but yeah.
So we can't allow them to have somebody come remove the manure, is what you're telling me?
It would mess with our traffic analysis in SEQA, I think, if we were saying they're, they have retail sales of manure.
I'm not doing retail sales. I'll tell you that right now. Nobody's paying for it. They come get it, but they don't buy it.
Let's let Julie answer that.
Basically, conditions, you know, you have a lot of discretion. I don't know if you can really force somebody to engage in a commercial sale of something that might be outside of the scope of what you're allowing.
And I wasn't proposing that. I was just saying it can be easily given away. And can we allow them to give it away?
You can be, again, the conditions just have to be related to the issues that you're trying to address in order to make the findings. And I, I mean, if you want to say that the manure pile has to be removed, whether it's through giving away, I would just, if you're trying, if the idea is to make the pile smaller, I would just condition it on can't be there for a certain period of time or has to be within a certain size. I mean, I wouldn't craft it on what actions they take in order to make that happen, but rather just the dimensions. And you would say it's because of concern about.
They've been so specific about how many truck trips are going in and out of that property. Granted, they don't cross a lot of other properties, so.
So we did a SEQA document and it said, based on a manure management plan. And I wasn't fully aware that the manure management plan hadn't been yet done. So I don't, I would, I guess, you know, but SEQA was done based on a manure management plan and that's where we are right now. And so I think that what I would do, what I would recommend doing so that we also don't give discretion to an agency that might not really have it, is to give the parameter, the general parameters of what would be too much manure, what would be, you know, and then to get the general parameters and then just say with implementation at the, you know, to the satisfaction of the environmental management agency. So, I mean, I don't have in my head right now every detail of the proposed plan or any of that.
But what's wrong with leaving size of manure piles, et cetera, to environmental services as a part of the determination of what?
If SEQA was done without level of delegation, then probably we're, I think you're probably okay.
Which it was. We had a manure management plan in place. We laid out and detailed our manure management plan. It has been inspected by environmental services and by animal control and was passed on both levels. And then they, and then we talked about doing a further.
Excuse me. We've been told by environmental services head that she has not seen a manure management plan. She is the one that will be looking.
She specifically didn't.
She's still here.
She's still here.
Is Matt Poole under your jurisdiction?
Yes.
Okay, so Matt Poole is the one that was here. So if you want to ask her specifically, it would be Matt Poole that was on property.
But that's not, we're speaking to the manure management plan. That's what I'm saying, that has not been seen because Matt was on site for a specific complaint response.
Yeah, for manure, flies.
And the water wells.
And water runoff. Yeah, and wells.
So the plan itself has yet to be determined and you are the person?
Yes, and Matt and onsite staff, environmental health inspectors, registered environmental health specialists.
They will have input and you make, you make the decision. And do you have a problem with, do you have a problem with our leaving that area basically up to you and that we just, we just condition the approval of this on compliance with the plan as developed or approved by environmental services?
So typically in the past, we have not established that oversight for a quote manure management plan because we usually typically on the onsite wastewater deal with feces, human feces, that, that sort, you know, of production.
I really think the commission should have a general parameters for what the manure management plan is because unless there's environmental regulations, in which case we could just defer to Ms. Medina, you know, and put, going according to those regulations. I do think the commission needs to weigh in on the general parameters and then leave it, and then certainly can delegate since, since Ms. Medina is willing to look at implementation and to help with compliance inspections, et cetera, or complaint based inspections, then she can look at that because we're not dealing with a county standard.
We don't have already.
And we would look at it from a health and safety code response.
Is there a manure management, are there regulations that actually exist that you're aware of?
No.
Okay.
It's from practices.
Yeah, best management practices, yes.
There are best management practices?
Well, not for, in a solid waste perspective, so we're getting into different areas.
In the egg world.
Yeah.
I mean, if there is something, if the concern is, if there are best management practices that are adequate to the commission to solve the problems that you're trying to solve with respect to manure, that makes it easy. You can just say, shall, you know, shall I use best management practices? And if that's a set of guidelines and the goal here is reducing feces and whatever vectors or other issues are related to feces, then that's why, I don't know if it'll address odor.
We have to do that research to find out what is available.
On my side as well, because the things that are associated with any type of manure are, of course, the odors and you don't have an odor.
If we're all ready for a collective groan from everyone here, I don't see how we're going to get this all resolved today. I think, I think we've come up with many concerns and I think we've come up with whether there are best management practices for this particular thing. I don't, I don't see how we can craft a resolution. We need to discuss the resolution considerably more, but I think, I think it's going to have to be something that's going to have to be, revised resolution is going to have to be provided at a later meeting.
Think we can.
Now you can groan.
Create an outline, go through the resolution, item by item, create an outline, knowing that we probably have to do a little more research so that we don't impose restrictions on you that are more than we need to and that they are sufficient to ensure some reasonable expectations for the neighbors, you know? So commissioners, how do you feel about that?
Right, I don't see how, yeah, I mean, I don't think we can come up with a resolution today, but I think we can lay something out.
Yes, yeah.
We can tell you what our intention is here today, is to achieve something that is going to give both of you, both you and all your supporters and family and your neighbors some assurance that this is moving in a direction. And how quickly would we be able to bring something back if we're able to get that part a day?
It really depends on the, on the scope of research that we need to do and what we need to look into.
Best practices, basically, right?
Yeah, it's just, I know there's stuff available online, I just don't know how specific it is. I don't know how.
I handed over the manure management plan that's for the Bay Area.
And we'd be looking to environmental management to basically craft that for us.
Or can we look at what she proposed? Because we haven't seen that. I mean, that might even help.
Right, we would, we would give this environmental management the proposal and then they could provide feedback and they could, environmental management could do it, but, I mean, that's kind of, you know, doing the waste management plan then upfront. So I just want to be, be clear that everyone's okay with that. And then we would bring it back as, as a continued item that.
I don't mean to take all discretion away from environmental, environmental management.
But maybe you can come up with something that seems like it's going to work and bring it back to us and we can.
I would like, I would want to know is environmental management willing to, to review this draft plan and then formulate a best management practices plan? I just want to make sure that they're okay with that.
My belief is that we would provide criteria that has to be met, but that the applicant would provide the plan. And then environmental management would review it, comment on it, make sure that it actually addresses all of the necessary components.
Yes, so we could go that way.
Okay, that would be fine.
I'd be open to that.
If the applicant provides it and then environmental management could review it. So us coming back though on a future board item would be contingent on when that process is completed.
Yeah, I'm thinking we don't need to have that final plan. All we have to have is the criteria for that plan and maybe a reference for that.
So is the, is the applicant providing that or is staff providing that to environmental management or what?
I'm saying.
Something maybe can just be reviewed.
I'm confused because I did give a.
So we're going to require a plan of the applicant as a condition of their permit. We are not going, this commission is not going to micromanage that plan. We're only going to provide, we're not even going to review it. Environmental management is going to review it. We're going to provide criteria for, to make sure those items are addressed in the plan. And I thought if we could look up a kind of standard best management practices for equine facilities, we could probably get the kinds of things that would need to be addressed in a plan.
We're still confronted with that, with best management practices for, for what sort of operation. I mean, that's one thing we're going to have to, I mean, if we're, if we're dealing with a 500 square mile pasture, it's different than dealing with a non-business. Again, we'll get back to the problem of most of the horses, if there are going to be 40 horses, most of those are to support an offsite business, not residential use with occasional onsite operations.
I'm sorry, but actually, most of them are not to support the offsite. A lot of them are to support, like, a lot of the kids that you heard talk have a horse, a favorite horse there. Some of those horses work in the offsite, but not all. And there are other horses that are, you know, pregnant or, or too young to ride. So there's, it's actually, when you talk about it being for the offsite, it's not most of.
I think what he's, he's really talking about is for the components that are requiring the conditional use permit, whether it's onsite or offsite, that things that are above and beyond your own personal facility.
Well, we keep talking about going above and beyond the own personal facility and it being, those being the offsite and saying that the horse, most of the horses are for, and that's not the case.
I'll take that back.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I just.
I think he was using that as shorthand for all the components that have brought you to this date. to this date, that you, you need that conditional use permit.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Yes, yes.
But you would have said it more eloquently. Mr. Oliver, was there something you wanted to contribute? You were standing.
I just wanted to provide a clarification so there's no confusion layer in support of, of environmental health. The environmental health department in reviewing that document is, is going to seek comments or other information from public works as well. I don't want that to be a surprise to the applicant or anyone else because in addition to the health and safety components that environmental health looks at, we have stormwater pollution prevention standards from the statewide permit that are mandatory. And I'd hate for something to come up and then become a compliance issue later that was not in this document. So the process is going to be more than one department looking at that plan to make sure that it complies with the state regulations. So I just throwing that out there.
I don't know that she would become subject to those if she's not doing a project that impacts.
But an illegal discharge is still technically an illegal discharge. So there has to be some best management practices that are specified and the experts are in public works on that. We, we work with them regularly on similar permit types for construction that you're right, doesn't rise to the level of projects. I'm just making sure nobody gets confused in the processes, why is this department getting involved? It's, it's a standard process. So I'm just throwing that out.
Really, really appreciate that.
More experts we can accumulate to reach a really low or actual resolution to this.
Yeah, we don't want to accidentally create a problem later after the permits issue. So throwing that out there.
That's, the water runoff has already been addressed and it's because we built on the top and then we have like grassland in between. But I, I welcome any further inspection.
So I think our goal here today is to get this outline done to, so that we can move forward with crafting the final resolution for whatever date it comes back to us.
I would suggest that some of us are suffering from hunger.
We don't want anybody angry talking about this, so let's.
Let's suffer a little.
Can we?
Let's try and get through this.
I'm hoping that if we put another half hour into this, that everybody could go home and.
Let's, let's see where we are in another half hour.
Okay. Fearless leader. Is there, I'm thinking just item by item through the resolution.
Okay, and I, I was a little confused about the, are we getting into the criteria today then about the waste management plan, manure management plan?
Well, so I feel like there's a little something circular going on because I think the idea was to have some general guidance, right? There's, this plan is coming out of conditions being imposed by the planning commission. It's not coming out of anything that's required in the state law. There might be aspects of state law that factor into as minimums such as animal welfare, which is what, that is what, you know, what EMA has jurisdiction over. Then there's odor control where we don't have standards other than whatever you come up with. And then there's manure management for purposes of stormwater and what have you, as Mr. Oliver said. So I think some guidance about what needs to be in the plan probably needs to come out.
That's what we think we're going to look at next time. That is the item that we're going to look at in detail next time after we've had a chance to look at what best practices are for this. Because I don't feel that I am an expert on this topic. And I don't want to impose some kind of requirement that ends up being not practical to attain. So I, I don't know how everybody else feels.
No, I agree. I think she has to come up with a plan that has to be reviewed by the services.
So I think Julie's right. We have to come up with those criteria, but I think we have to look at what criteria those might be.
That's what I'm hoping we're going to.
Yes, uncharted territory.
Yeah.
Hoping that's what we would get the, the next time.
I just want to, you know, really emphasize that the planning department would be looking to, towards environmental management and the applicant to.
Sure.
We're, we're happy to process it and happy to, you know, move it along to another hearing, but we certainly wouldn't want to be involved in, in crafting the waste management plan.
I think all we're asking you to do is to do enough research to bring back to us an example of the kinds of things that we should be looking at and then we would massage that.
Not.
Exactly.
Yeah, there's, there is a plan here. I do, do not know what's in it and I would, I would be handing this to environmental management to review, so.
And I don't think we are, again.
We're not going to.
Looking to delve deeply into the specifics of the plan. We are looking to develop the criteria that Julie is talking about.
What standards will we set for the formulation of the plan, not approve?
And I, yeah, I just also wanted to add like, the plan for sequoia purposes was to address odor. Okay? So that's the sequoia piece of it. It can be broader again to incorporate the other things that people have now brought up are, that are, that are concerns.
Right.
That's all I'm just trying to.
Exactly.
If we manage to the manure, you're going to manage to odor and the flies.
Right, so it's the other. And that's why all my inspections have said that I've been positive, like, everybody is, has cleared me repeatedly. So obviously my plan works because there's no odor, no flies, no dust.
I think the problem, the problem is that staff hasn't seen it.
This, I understand that. This particular plan, I did submit a plan with my application and Madeline has that. This particular plan is from online. It's from the Bay Area. It's the gold standard for all sort, and it's what I do. So if you want to look at it later, it's easy to find. It's just, it's already published.
Right, thank you.
Okay, so we move on to the resolution and thank you.
So let's walk through the resolution to see if there's other pieces. So I, you know, the big things here are what's that number going to be and what are the criteria for the, for this management plan? And I'm quite sure Commissioner Ladish has some other technical points to make.
Yes, well, in, in my concern that, especially in an area where there's been, there's been controversy in the past, I think it's very important that this resolution itself be very clear as to when we get around to conditions and, and what's referred to in the plan. The, now, in our package, there's the resolution and there's Exhibit A. Now, the resolution itself is, what is it? It's Attachment 1 to the staff report. After Exhibit A on the resolution, then there are the other attachments to the staff report. My concern is that there are references in the resolution to things that are not attached, not, not exhibits to the resolution. First, there's just a matter of, there is an Exhibit A, which is the proposed site development plan. It isn't actually referenced in the resolution and I think it should be, you know, reference in the resolution is attached to here as Exhibit A included or whatever.
So it is in the conditions. But I called it, accidentally called it Attachment A, but that's in the conditions. You wanted reference to it in one of the evidence sections?
Where was your reference to Attachment A?
Mr. Ladish, couldn't we resolve all of this by just making sure we have a provision that says all exhibits, the staff report and all exhibits to it or to the resolution are hereby incorporated by reference? Couldn't we just do that?
If, yes, I think we could do that.
I'll help with that.
But then I still have problems. Now, now Julie, okay, I'm not a petulant child. The, it's just when you have an exhibit to a resolution, you usually refer to it. That's, would be an easy thing to do. The conditions, well, first, the proposed site development plan, it doesn't make it clear exactly at what point this was proposed and whether it takes into account any of the conditions such as the conditions of the imposed or suggested by the fire department, the roundabout or the turn, turnaround area, that sort of thing. I don't see anything that, that is proposed that would be reflective of the conditions that have been suggested.
It just says under the conditions that roadways must be 20 feet in width, a hammerhead or turnaround is required. I'm assuming.
It's the name, the title of this site plan is really represents what exists today is that.
Right.
That's, that's needs to be made clear.
You had made a suggestion of including Exhibit A reflects the current status of property and does not reflect changes that will occur due to the conditions or mitigation measures that is set forth in the resolution.
We don't have to have all that language in.
Well, no, I, I think that makes the point perfectly. You wanted that under finding three.
Uh huh, okay. That would be fine. Now, then in the proposed resolution, the mitig, conditions mitigation measures 2-2, if that makes sense, refers to the approved project description. That, I have not found an approved project description.
So if it's approved, meaning the project description that is included at the beginning of the staff report, we've never included a separate exhibit to the resolution, including that paragraph. We could certainly make reference to what is included either in the secret document or the staff report. Or if you wish us to start, you know, creating a separate exhibit for use permits, to include that as a separate thing that gets attached to the resolution, we can certainly do that.
I, I think when we say the project shall be in conformance with the approved project description, it does sound like something that exists. So either that language needs to be changed or we need to.
Well, wouldn't Julie suggested language that all, you know, all, every part of the staff report and is incorporated by reference into the resolution?
I think the SEQA document is, when we use terms like approved project description, that is usually related to the scope of the project at, for purposes of the SEQA analysis.
Oh, so it's, it's the.
But I don't know if that's what the intent is here, but I'm assuming.
I have not found in, in any of this package, anything that's labeled approved project description.
We could, we could certainly make that change.
Can I just suggest that we leave it to planning and Julie to.
Yes.
Extract the pieces we need and make sure that we have a definition for it.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. That's why I'm raising the question right now. And the, let's see, major or conditions or major 2-3 talks with, says the project shall be in conformance with the project plans and attachment A.
Which is Exhibit A.
I'm sorry, what?
Exhibit A, yeah. What's attached to the resolution.
Okay.
I accidentally called it attachment. I'm changing that to Exhibit A.
Okay. But a project, I mean, project plans is a lot different than status quo. Or maybe just the, the term project plans, if you can, if you can make it clear that, I mean, it sounds, that sounds again as if it's something that we have to approve. This is project, the, the script, the current description or whatever.
Yeah, the project as described, including all required mitigations or conditions, whatever. I think you guys can come up with that wording.
Because we're, they're, I mean, such as the, the fire department's recommendations are not, not reflected in Exhibit A. So, okay, again, that's, that's.
It's all because those, those conditions aren't reflected on that existing site plan that we have.
I know, but that's, that's, that's the problem.
I'm just trying to capitalize whatever, what you're saying in a short way that they can come up with some new wording for.
Okay, and again, we're going to be dealing with a mitigation monitoring and reporting plan that, you know, says in the resolution is attached here to, anyhow, we'll just leave that for, for our, our later discussion as to just what we are going to be asking environmental management to do. And I do think that the negative declaration, it would be helpful to have the negative declaration as a part of the resolution. If we do what was suggested by Julie, it will be included by reference. But, and so I don't think we have to have a, a particular quotation of it in the body of the resolution. Those are, those are my, my kind of housekeeping concerns.
So the elephant or.
Can I just get some clarification on that last one super quick? So I had forgotten to attach the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Are you saying you also want the declaration document itself attached to the resolution in addition?
The mitigated negative deck attached, I think is.
But that doesn't include.
But we keep saying that Julie's language would take care of that.
And also I love to think about, I hate to do this, but we got to think a little bit about the IQM2 software we're going to need if it goes to the board. If this goes to the board, we're going to need to be, to put the entire mitigated neg deck in the body of the resolution is, is really. I don't think he wants the checklist. I think he wants just the declaration itself, the one or two page declaration itself. I think we'll figure out something that hopefully will satisfy everybody's concerns. I think what I'm hearing is that if we're referring to documents in the resolution, we either need to incorporate them by reference or it needs to be clear where they are. That's sort of what I'm hearing. And I think we can look at that and make sure that we, everybody can find and we've incorporated every document that we refer to in the resolution.
And that each document is appropriately characterized as whether its current status or.
Right.
Required with changes. And, you know, while we're dealing with planning conditions and mitigation measures, I would suggest that we could add something and you don't need to write down every word, that the applicant shall at least conform to the standard stated in UC Davis's publication, a guide, minimum standards of force care in the state of California. And I understood the applicant today to say she would have no objection to that condition.
And it's referenced in the staff report already.
Well, that this is the condition.
No, I understand. I'm just saying they already have the reference for it available to them.
Yeah, I, I, I do think that the, the conditions mitigation measures should include the, the description with the limitations on the number of clients and number of staff and employees servicing those clients.
Can I, can I speak to that? We haven't, for mitigation, again, the only significant, potentially significant impact that they found was odor. So they, that's why this mitigation measure is more limited than we needed, than, it's more limited.
I'm talking about a separate, a separate statement as a condition that would be in total conformance with what's stated earlier as the intentions. The scope of this business that will be conducted on premises, I think, needs to be limited, needs to be reflected in the conditions themselves.
The conditions of approval, so when you said, I think, a change to, I just, you said initially a change to mitigation, and that's a different thing than a change to a condition of approval.
If, what I'm, what I was quoting was the heading here in the resolution, Part Two, Planning Conditions Slant Mitigation Measures. That's why I said mitigation measure. I'd be happy if we take mitigation measures out of that heading and call them all conditions.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's why I...
We'll look at it.
Yeah, that's why, that's, that's why I use the term mitigation measure, because it's in the resolution. Anyhow...
We're boring the audience to death here.
Audience can go to lunch anytime they want.
I, I think we need to let people get back to their lives, so we need to get far enough along so that planning has the direction that they need and that, and then people can choose to come back or watch online next time, but they can track what's happening. So the one thing we haven't talked about is the number of horses of all kinds, not one still in mom's belly. But we are, what number is it that, that commission as a whole is comfortable with? And I heard Commissioner Roby suggest something, Commissioner Latish suggests something, so let's hear it.
I'm at forty. I think thirty's a good number.
I don't, honestly, somewhere between thirty and forty works for me.
Thirty is a...
I'm fine with forty, though, in between.
So, yeah, I, I can't go over thirty. I don't believe in my, and I don't want to limit it to twenty. I do feel like thirty is a number that I, I feel is a good starting place.
So are we looking for a happy medium?
No, no.
She has thirty-five.
No, no. The happy medium is between twenty and forty.
I've already come up.
Our happy medium was between our thirty and forty.
My happy medium was between twenty-five and thirty, so I'm gone to the top of my range.
Yeah, me too.
So the polling came out with...
Let's, Commissioner Roby.
I was thinking twenty, but thirty, I think, is a reasonable number.
Can we do thirty-five?
Commissioner Parker.
I just feel like if we just stick to the number that she has, and these are on the ground, okay, we're not going to, who wants this thing, it's on the ground, those on the ground, thirty-five works for me.
I'm good with thirty.
Top of thirty.
You'd go forty.
I'm thirty-five.
So we have three, there's three for thirty, basically.
Yeah.
Okay.
And understanding that if all this goes really well, and the business goes really well, and the relationships with the surrounding neighbors goes really well, that you can always come back.
Even if, if, if neighbors are, not anybody personally here, unreasonable, you don't have to count them in the, in the balance.
Is there a question? I, I heard somebody talking, so...
Is my head rattling?
I'm sorry. How bad happened?
So the, the finding number three in the resolution would be, except for the number of horses proposed, that subject property was adequate, blah, 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 and then you're going to have to have language at the end of the evidence. Number one in the evidence, we should make sure this is not California's minimum standards, but it's the publication from UC Davis.
Got it, yeah.
And that...
That is what it is, minimum standards of horse care in the state of California?
Yes, but it's published, it's not the state's standards, it's not the state of California. And then the statement in here that, that Calaveras County Animal Services recognizes a twenty acre parcel can adequately support, that has to be qualified, that can adequately support up to forty horses if all those minimum standards are met. And then there'll be a need for a statement about how we're not going to go for forty, because this is all part of the finding as far as what the property can support.
So the wording is that it would be possible for a twenty acre parcel to support forty horses, which is what we heard, right? Not this parcel, but a parcel.
Right, I mean, so, Animal Services citing UC Davis's minimum standards of horse care in California, which it uses in its own evaluation of alleged cruelty to horses, states that a twenty acre parcel can adequately support up to forty horses if all those minimum standards are met.
It, it doesn't actually state that. It doesn't state any number.
No, 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 so I'm trying to make very clear that it doesn't state a number. If I'm not, and it's that Animal Services is the one that came up with the forty horses.
No, the forty horses is just a number that they proposed. That was proposed in the...
The standards.
And that Animal Services responded to the query, could a twenty acre parcel support forty horses? And they said, yes.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to state, so if we can make it clearer than what I'm saying.
Okay, yeah, I got it.
And that's fine.
So I'm going to let you guys handle that. You understood that discussion, right?
Absolutely.
That's what we have our pros for.
We can put in something along the lines of, Animal Services, which has not studied this particular property, does not have an opinion as to how many horses this property can properly support while complying with this.
Yeah.
Do you want to throw something in here?
Just, just a question, is, are what you guys are, what I'm trying to ask is, is this your guys' decision? Are you open to being convinced? Because it sounds like this is not an arbitrary decision, but a decision informed on the information that you have available to you and not based on laws that are currently in place specifically. So it is a judgment call, and are you willing to hear out our case for the reason why the number should be at the number that we request specifically? Have that specific question addressed? Or is this something that you guys are willing to decide of your own judgment with the information that you have currently only?
I, I think we have heard, all, all sides of this issue, and this is where we're, wherever...
But you'd be willing to hear, so you're saying you think you have heard?
We have heard.
We, we've had that discussion. I think that's, that's what Commissioner Latish is saying.
Yeah.
Is that we've had the discussion on that, and we've balanced what we believe are the interests and concerns of the neighbors versus your, what your desires are and making it possible for you to continue on what you are doing.
And they're higher than what these guys wanted, so...
No, I, I, I'm not sitting here and saying you guys are making a rough, harsh judgment.
What I'm telling you is, or what we're all telling you, not, certainly not just me, is that we're not saying this is forevermore. If you were to come back and say, two years from now, and say, I have fenced all of this, we have made these arrangements, look at our management plan, it's all operating so well, we think we could easily handle another ten or fifteen horses, then we could make that decision, it might not be me at that point.
What I'm trying to say is if you were on our property today, right now, you would say that our horses are managed and taken care of.
The question is not about whether our horses are healthy, the question is, what is your impact on the neighbors? We believe that your horses are healthy.
What I'm, what I'm saying is you could limit us to twenty horses, and we would still have the complaints with the neighbors. You could limit us to ten horses, we would still have the complaints with the neighbors because we were getting those complaints when we had ten horses.
We understand that.
So it's not a matter of how many horses we have, it's whether our horses are...
The solution to that is to deny the conditional use permit.
Yeah.
Because you're trying to go away from...
You're arguing against your own interests here.
That's, that's, that's fair, so I'll make, I'll make the last, the last little piece
that I want to say. It's just that we, we have done, the, the horses that we have are taken care of, the plans that we have to be able to get those horses away from being the problem for them has been stopped only by us being ordered not to do more. And our horses can not only be taken care of on the property that we have, but also not be an impact on the neighbors in a way that we get complaints for by being allowed to have what we have. And, or by being allowed to continue with our progress without being impeded. So what I'm saying is that our thirty-five, and you could see today, are would be not only taken care of, and, you know, healthy, you agree that they're, they're healthy, it's not the argument, is that the neighbors wouldn't have this kind of place for concern. They'd be off the, the neighbors fences and everything else if we were allowed to move forward with what we have. We don't even need to limit down the number of horses that we have today to be able to do that. All we have to do is just continue building the pasture, just be allowed to do what we've been trying to do. So I'm saying that the thirty-five number, I know that is being argued against, what we have today is healthy for the horses. People bring their horses to build them up, like we have oftentimes brought in horses that were in severe shape and built them up from that point. So our property is more than capable of managing healthy...
You're missing the point.
Yeah, exactly.
The point is, we're trying to balance between your needs and their needs.
And, and within the context of what the law is and what, what a zone piece of property that's owned, RR, can do.
I'd love to see this enthusiasm for taking good care of your horses and providing for the kids.
And you can come back.
We get really upset when we feel like it's being questioned that we can't take care of our horses.
That's not it at all.
I know that.
We're not...
I understand you, there's other people that say it differently.
Exactly, we have to balance this.
Where's my agenda? I have lost, I have lost the thread here.
Did you want to continue it to a date certain?
Yes, that, do we want, let's hear from you about what you think is reasonable.
Yeah, I just, I hate to keep bringing it up, but I, I really want clarification on what the expectation is on the, on the manure management plan. We have a draft from the applicant. My plan from here would be to have environmental management review it, we could do a little bit of research on some best management practices that go with it, we'd coordinate with environmental management, we'd bring you back a draft of this to review, a dra, a draft of the plan, or just bringing back criteria. I just want to be clear on what the...
I think all we are looking for is criteria.
Okay.
So we, we can provide standard...
I think there are experts on the actual plan and how to...
Right, so you'd set the criteria, and then that condition of approval would, would be in place, and then it would be finalized by environmental management after. Perfect, thank you so much.
That's right.
Yep.
Cool, half hour is there to figure out?
Yep, sorry. Okay, so, two weeks, I'm on.
I mean, our next date's coming up, and maybe, and that could help me, I mean, April tenth would be one that's coming up. I, I don't think we, we've already passed the twenty-seventh deadline, so...
Or when have we renoticed?
No, but...
Oh, if we just came back.
But aren't we adding documents, Julie, to the packet that would be considered new information, so we couldn't just continue it to the next meeting?
I mean, you're not, unless you're changing the sequoia document...
No.
I think, no, I think that you can continue it to the next meeting, and you would just need to meet the round act requirements for, you know, the publication of the new materials. And it wouldn't have to be renoticed because it would be continued to a date certain. Or is there something I'm missing? I feel like I might be missing something.
No, I don't think you are. I, I would say that the next meeting, you do have a fairly contentious project coming your way.
Oh, yeah, you probably wouldn't want it on the same day.
I, I was thinking April tenth is what I was thinking, but...
Yeah, I'm, I'm just hating to, to hold things up long, longer than is truly necessary, but...
It, you could do both on the same day.
Yeah, I, I'd rather do that.
I'll do it. Let's, let's, let's get these guys, everybody moved on, you know?
So continuing to the next agendized meeting.
To the twenty-seventh.
The only thing is, we have to talk about tomorrow, is the twenty-seventh.
So packets, I mean, I, I know that the planning commission's used to receiving packets two weeks in advance, that's not mandatory. They could do their notice for the other hearing separately, and just understand you might not receive your materials until a little closer to the meeting because they need time to get it together.
But it's very limited what we're looking at. I mean, we've already discussed...
It is. It's, it's not, it's not a heavy lift, it just by tomorrow would be, would be very difficult. But if we could, if we could get a week and split the difference, that would be fantastic. I, I see no issues with that.
So, twenty-seventh?
So, I'd like a motion to continue this item to whatever month it is, March twenty-seventh.
I so move.
Well, I didn't, I, you, you moved it, okay, thanks, and there's a second. So, all in favor?
I am.
Any opposed?
Because I can't make the twenty-seventh.
You can't be here, is that what you said?
I will not be in the country.
Do you trust us?
Yeah, I trust you guys.
Well, I, you know, I, well, I think there's a problem, though. I mean, if, if you are one of the three that's going for thirty horses, and you're not here...
No, we, I don't think that's a legal problem. I mean, we've taken the poll.
Right.
And so, it's up to you guys, that you can have a hearing with four people if you want to.
Oh, yes.
Are you comfortable with that?
Can we vote, just asking the question?
Come on up so we can hear you.
I'm just asking the question, can we vote yes or no on the cup today so that Commissioner Roby can be in there?
That's what our poll did.
Okay, got you, so you voted yes towards...
It's not permanent.
Right, 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 I understand that. But you voted yes to, because when you said moving forward, you didn't say negative or positive, you just moved forward. So I don't know, I'm just asking. And then we're talking about mitigation measures.
Let me be clear, what we are talking about is asking staff to come back to us with something that is an approval of a CUP for you with some modifications to what was presented to us today.
Gotcha, okay, I understand, thank you, that helps. Just want to make sure.
Okay.
Trying to sleep at night.
Yeah, yeah, so, and you're comfortable with us moving forward with those criteria, okay? Then I'm going to go to whatever, we don't have any names on these items, do we have any informational items? It appears none. Does any commissioner have the guts to give a report today?
Certainly not. I have nothing more to say.
Alrighty, does the planning director want to share?
Yeah, I have a, I have a large report out that I could give.
You do have a report that we're going to have a fairly full agenda at our next meeting?
Yes.
The only question is, are we going to need an overflow room? Just think about it.
Yeah, that's a good point, I think we'll arrange for that.
All right.
Okay, thanks.
So we're going to have four of us, where are we going to need to...
Guys, at five minutes after, or maybe six minutes after one, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for, for how polite and patient you've all been.